We think Girls Club is in here yet?
Hey, Dario.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moment of silence, we didn't even ask for one.
We don't even have it yet, yeah.
Off the phone, whatever the phone says, that's what I use it for nine o'clock, alright. Good morning, everyone, uh, we will now begin the meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. If we could please stand and we'll be led with the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Valero, followed by a moment of silence.
Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will take up our first item on today's agenda, and that will be Board of Supervisors matters, and today we'll start with Supervisor Townsend.
Okay, thank you, good morning, everyone. We had a busy last couple of weeks with the World Ag Expo, so we were all able to get over there and, uh, and go for the opening ceremonies and get a chance to walk around and get some sore feet, see all the good stuff. Uh, I missed the rain personally, just being there that day, so, but it was good. Went back that evening for Capitol Ministries, had a dinner there, and that was really interesting. Uh, James Bridenstine, the NASA Administrator, was there. He also gave a quick talk at the opening ceremonies and then, uh, gave a full speech at the Capitol Ministries Dinner, and, uh, really a fascinating, uh, speech and a great organization there. Uh, had a chance to meet with, uh, uh, the East Tulie White Area Growers, um, on the 13th, and they're just, uh, with everybody else, facing the challenges of, of Sigma and trying to put plans together, they're trying to stay out ahead of it as being one of those in the white area or outside of the, the water districts. They have some special challenges, and so have been able to kind of stay close to that and look forward to some good things coming out of, uh, of that group. Had the pleasure of giving a welcome to the EDD, put on a migrant and seasonal farmworkers appreciation Day and Resource Fair over in Porterville on the 15th, and was able to give a, a welcome there and spend some time looking around all the booths, and the county was well represented there as well. And had my first chance at being on the, uh, ad hoc space planning, uh, committee with, uh, with Supervisor Vanderpool. That was very interesting, just to see, uh, plans, challenges, uh, ideas and brainstorm about how the county is going to be growing and the need for facilities over the next, uh, several years, some immediate needs that we need to get real creative on, and so really appreciated everyone, uh, that, that participated in that meeting and brought the needs to the table and some ideas about how we might, we might handle those in the future. Uh, also was able to meet with the RMA and, uh, and Johnny Wong from the Roads Department, and I do appreciate all the input coming back from that after all of the snow, which we're so thankful for, uh, up in the mountains. I did receive a lot of calls from, uh, people in the mountain communities about, uh, about the road conditions and plowing, and, uh, so we had, uh, it was a mixed bag saying, you know, we're really thankful for that, we're praying for more, and same time, we're gonna try to keep the roads cleared where you can get around up there. So, uh, but I really appreciate RMA and the, and the Road Department for all their input, feedback and, and help on that matter. And then Supervisor Valero and I were able to, uh, go to Sacramento for the, uh, CSAC New Supervisors Institute for the second round of that on the 21st and 22nd, and, uh, as I told Bill Shiat from, uh, CSAC, uh, the other day on the phone, uh, now it was like, you know, when you go to college and you're studying up for your career, uh, once you get in the career and you've, you've been working, you know, behind the, the desk or wherever it is you are, are working, uh, for several months, all of a sudden you realize, oh, that's what they were talking about. And so the second institute was really good because now we've experienced some of those things and everything, uh, was, uh, was very pertinent to what we're going through, uh, now as, as supervisors, so I appreciated CSAC for that. And we had TCAG, uh, yesterday and, uh, got a few, uh, members appointed and, uh, and so we're, uh, moving down the road, no pun intended. And got up to date a little bit on, on our healthcare, uh, for the county and some strategies with that, uh, from, uh, from Rhonda and Lupe over at Human Resources and Development, so thanks for that update, uh, yesterday. And that's about it, that's enough.
Supervisor Vanderpool, I don't know if it's enough or not, but that's what it was.
Alright, so I'll do something a little different than Supervisor Townsend, I'm gonna look forward, uh, not over the past couple of weeks.
That mean you didn't do anything, or?
I didn't, no. Actually, it's been a very busy few weeks, so, um, uh, looking forward, tomorrow there's a, uh, Tsera Board of Retirement, uh, meeting for, uh, the county's Employees Retirement Association, 8:30 at the Tsera office. Um, this, uh, Wednesday at 4:30 PM, uh, right here, uh, we have a, uh, special event that's near and dear to my heart, uh, and that's Government 101, uh, the effort that is put on by county staff and, uh, used to include local, uh, government attorneys that are in the private sector but represent special districts to help put on a training session for special district board members, uh, throughout the county who, uh, are elected to serve the public the same way we are, but just don't receive any kind of training or the, the same level of training that, uh, we do to equip ourselves. So, uh, this is, I think, the ninth? Ninth session that we've had, uh, and they've been very, very well attended, um, and I think very beneficial to the members, uh, of special districts who attend the sessions, and, uh, there's always questions and the same people keep coming back, uh, each year, so that means there's more questions and definitely a need for the, uh, session. On Thursday, there's going to be a Tulare County Association of Governments Retreat, that's gonna be all day long. I will be joining the retreat, uh, for the afternoon session because I have a First Five Commission meeting, um, that is at 10 o'clock right here in these chambers. On March 6th, which is next week, uh, we have a LAFCO meeting, um, that's at 2 o'clock right here in these chambers. The Greater Quia Groundwater Sustainability Agency meets on, uh, March 11th, uh, that's a couple Mondays from now, um, and then, uh, there will be a Retirement Board meeting that week, uh, uh, the 13th of March at 8:30 at Tsera. And that's really all that I wanted to highlight, public meetings that I want, uh, to make sure people are aware of and members of the public and county. Thanks for your chair.
Supervisor Shuckland.
Thank you, uh, I too, uh, as everybody else, attended the Ag Expo. Thank God it was the first day and not the second or third day, so we kept, uh, nice and dry, got a little chilly there towards the end. Um, on the 14th, I attended the California State Association Counties, uh, Board of Directors Meeting, which I now sit on and represent Tulare County. Uh, it was a very interesting meeting, a lot of good information, I just wanna really quick, uh, the policy priorities for, uh, CSAC, um, in representing also all counties this year will be wildfires and other disasters, housing and homelessness, in-home support services, uh, behavioral health, the 2020 census, bail reform and local governance and land use authority, so I'll be keeping folks updated on that. It was interesting, uh, part of the behavioral health piece is the federal government, uh, Office of Inspector General did an audit of specialty mental health services and found, um, they are now trying to get or will be getting $180.7 million in recoupment, recoupments from the counties, um, and they had a, a formula that they came up with and, uh, that they said was fair and balanced, I don't know how, Tim, you're laughing, how fair and balanced it is, what are we paying back, about three? Three, 3.8 million, and I think our audit showed, I won't say the amount, it's too embarrassing, under $50, I think, in, in, um, during the audit, so, anyway, so we'll be doing that. Um, in addition to the CSAC meeting, my iPad just turned off, um, tomorrow, um, tomorrow I will be attending my Tulare County Economic Development Corporation meeting, Thursday I too will be at the TCAG meeting. I wanna mention, um, if you go onto, uh, Facebook or, uh, GoFundMe, the Tulare County Peace Officers Memorial Organization is doing a fundraiser right now, um, in order to raise money to add a canine memorial to the Peace Officers Memorial out here, um, I'm sure that was, uh, initiated because of the recent loss of the Tulare K9, and as always with any memorial, we, we hope it's, it's the last one we have to, to put anything on, but I think it's a, it's a good thing to do. And then this Friday and Saturday, I will be participating in the Miss Tulare County Pageant, and I know this comes as a shock, it's not as a contest. I will be a judge, uh, for the Miss Tulare County Pageant, and that is it.
Very good Supervisor Valero.
Great, well, good morning. Um, so two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend the Southern California Gas Appreciation Dinner with my colleague Dennis Townsend, held at the Visalia Convention Center. I also too participated in the, uh, Ag Expo. That evening on, um, Tuesday, attended the East Arosi Water Board Meeting, the, um, to continue to work on matters pertaining to the lift station mishap and water issues affecting its residents. I also had the opportunity and the privilege to recognize outgoing board members and install new officers at a dinner for the Veterans of America Chapter 643 in Dinuba. I also attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the new Cutler Arosi Sports Complex. So this space will have four soccer fields, a baseball and softball field, a waterspout park, Pop Warner football field, along with basketball courts and parking, so the communities of Cutler and Arosi are excited for this new addition, and it will definitely keep Cutler Arosi moving forward and enriching the landscape of the area. Um, on Friday, February 15th, I attended the County Oversight Board, and that afternoon, Sam Ferrero, one of our board reps and I, participated in our Step Up SWAC Analysis Workshop with our facilitator Logan Roberts, and I know a colleague of mine, Angela Reese Alvarez is in the room, and she also participated in that as well. And we had a great study session about the future of Step Up, along with next steps and opportunities for its restructuring, and I will continue to keep, uh, my colleagues here on this dais informed of the changes moving forward. Uh, last week I was very busy, um, like, we've all always have, have something to do, so we're all very busy, but on Tuesday, uh, of last week, I went to Sacramento, uh, to receive the, uh, Water Justice Award from the Community Water Center in Sacramento. I then returned home that night for all-day meetings on Wednesday, including an APAC, uh, meeting where we discussed updated bylaws and the, uh, Temporary Moratorium on Hemp, which we will be discussing, uh, this morning. And then I also met with members of CSAT, Community Services and Employment Training, to discuss and learn about their services to seniors. I then drove back to Sacramento that night and attended the CSAC New Institute with my colleague as mentioned. Uh, this past weekend, I attended the Dinuba Women's Club Butterfly Brunch, and in the evening went to support the Cutler Arosi Lions Club with their casino night. Uh, yesterday, I attended the remodeling of the Bank of America Community Financial Center in Dinuba, and it's completely changed in order to provide immediate as well as direct services to its clients by focusing on community, financial prosperity and workshops in its new community room. So, uh, this banking system is kind of looking to new ways of, of, of servicing the clients, but also just making sure that they are forward-thinking in their approach to the banking business. Uh, in addition to that, um, this week, sorry, um, I will be attending, uh, several, uh, meetings and events, one of them being the, um, I will be at the United Health Centers in Dinuba for their grand opening. In addition to that, um, this Thursday, uh, we will be having a Seeds of Love Event, uh, where organizations have come together, for example Kiwanis of Dinuba, Kiwanis of Woodlake, as well as the City of Woodlake, Cutler Arosi Joint Unified School District, and the County of Tulare, coming together to recognize and honor nonprofits that continue to uplift their communities and the people that they serve. So we are looking forward to that, and I know we have Yolanda Valdez, our superintendent, who will be serving as a keynote for that event. Um, and that is all to report, thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, just to highlight, um, a few things that's happened, um, since our last board meeting. Last Wednesday, after our, the RCRC Executive Board Meeting, I, um, along with, uh, our, our new chairman, Matt Kingsley, Inyo County Supervisor, had a couple of meetings with, well, with Senator, uh, Melissa Hurtado, who, uh, now represents, uh, me and I think Supervisor Valero as well, and, uh, just introduce ourselves as well as, um, talk about forest management, um, the need to continue to, um, to provide funding for that and to be aggressive with, uh, the thinning of our forests from a, from not only an air quality standpoint, but, um, from a, from a water standpoint, from, uh, protection of lives, so that was a very good meeting, and she was very open, we talked, uh, other water issues as well, uh, and she, um, committed to, to engaging with us on a regular basis, and I, I think she's already shown an effort, uh, why she's gonna be at Supervisor Valero's event on Thursday evening in Woodlake, so, um, good, good progress on the, uh, on, in the beginning of the first few months. Um, Senator Manning, we discussed specifically the Safe Drinking, um, Water Quality Fund that he's been promoting for the last two years, and, um, there's, there's renewed, um, energy and vigor on that front, as, uh, Governor Newsom has indicated, that's something that's important to him. Um, there's still the usual stumbling blocks in the assembly, so, um, that's gotta be, uh, something that, that's worked out, but, um, he's optimistic that, uh, this is the year that something can get done, and for us, what that means is that helps our Zones of Benefit, which means that we don't have to necessarily subsidize those things out of our general fund, um, that means that we can have, uh, better water quality for many of our communities, it means reduced rates, uh, for these, uh, communities when you have regionalization, and there's a lot of other opportunities for, it's, uh, and it's, it's very positive as well as it takes the burden off agriculture and farmers to have to provide, uh, some of these services whether or not, um, they actually were the cause. Um, so that, that was a, a good meeting. Saturday was the Exeter Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards, that was a great event, and then, uh, yesterday there was a, um, Supervisor Chuck Nguyen out of San Joaquin County and I had a discussion last fall about getting together, uh, regional, uh, or San Joaquin Valley Counties about discussing some priorities, especially with the new administration, and so there was a conference call on Monday morning and to discuss what some of our priorities might be, um, and, and it was, uh, the chairs of each of the eight San Joaquin Valley Counties is, along with staff, and, um, our lobbyist Paul Yoder helped to organize the, the call, so I very much appreciate that, I know he's not here right now, but he'll be here later. And, um, and the idea is that, that we may have an opportunity as a valley to really get some, to get something that would be major, um, whether it's transportation-related, water-related, um, you know, land use, I mean, there's, there's kind of all over the map, and so it's kind of in the, in the preliminary stages, so I'm looking forward to the discussion this afternoon because I think that's going to help shape what we advocate from that standpoint. Uh, and the governor is very interested in, uh, making friends in the San Joaquin Valley, I think he, he real recognizes that, um, the votes didn't come as high as, uh, the Bay Area or some other parts of the state for him, but that doesn't mean that he's disregarding us, he's very much interested in, in trying to bridge that gap, and, um, so, so I think we have, uh, a good opportunity this year. Um, upcoming, um, everyone's already mentioned the TCAG Board Retreat, uh, for the RMA staff that hopefully will be attending, I hope that it's going to be very worthwhile, we're gonna be talking about visioning and transit and some other, um, things for the public, I, you might, if you have problems with, uh, insomnia, then I would suggest you attend, and that'll cure it. I will be attending the NACO, which is the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference, I'll be leaving Friday and coming back the following Thursday. Our federal lobbyist has helped set up, uh, several meetings with our, our congressional delegation, um, we'll be having, uh, several press conferences and committee meetings, um, from my role specifically on SRS, Secure Rural Schools Program, as well as PILT, Payment in Lua Taxes, um, that, that impacts us, and for us, that's, uh, just shy of $4 million from the federal level, so, and that's, um, that's dollars that, that we use for roads specifically, as well as, um, just helping out with, uh, general funds, so it's, it's something that's really important for us. And then, um, next, uh, March 7th, Thursday, March 7th, is our, uh, California Citrus Mutual's Annual Citrus Showcase, it's a great little, um, one-day event where there's a lot of vendors that talk about the latest and greatest in citrus, there's also seminars and breakouts to discuss what's going on, whether it's from a regulatory standpoint, water standpoint, um, I'm sure there'll be some discussion about Asian citrus salad and, uh, Wong Long Bing and what's happening with that, and so there's a lot of good breakouts for, and it's open to the public, so it, um, I think the lunch requires a reservation, but other than that, I think you can just walk around the Convention Center in Visalia. And then March 13th will be the RCRC General Board Meeting. I think that's all I have to report, alright. You guys have all heard enough for now, so we'll do something, we'll switch gears a little bit and, uh, go into something a little bit more exciting, and that is, uh, item number two, the Presentation of a Proclamation Recognizing Big Brothers Big Sisters of Central California on Their 50th Anniversary. And, uh, we have Diane, our Executive Director from Big Brothers Big Sisters, I saw come in, if you'd wanna come up to the podium, I think, uh, Supervisor Valero has, uh, has a nice proclamation for you and some words, and there may be some other young people, some big brothers and big sisters that are also here, come on up. While they're coming up, I know Supervisor Vanderpool has, uh, previously served on this great organization's Board of Directors, and so it's also been, uh, something that, that he's helped out personally, many years.
And I will preface this by saying that Supervisor Vanderpool was supposed to come and give the proclamation, but I wanted to play paper, rock, scissors with him to decide who would, but he graciously said, you know what, Eddie, go right ahead, so thank you so much Supervisor Vanderpool. Alright, if I can have everyone come up. Awesome.
Hi Diane, how are you? Nice to see you.
So first I will give a few words, um, with regards to mentorship, and then thereafter I will invite big brothers and big sisters to share, and then I will read off the proclamation and present it to big brothers, big sisters. So, just to let you know that statistics say, one in four public school children drop out before they finish high school. For African-American and Hispanic students, the challenge is more severe, with the likelihood of graduating on time from high school only 65%. Many of these students don't have access to positive role models, cannot envision a career, and don't feel connected to their communities. It is tragic that young people who drop out are much more likely to be unemployed, incarcerated, or live in poverty. One out of every three young people who, outside of their family at home, don't have a trusted adult who they believe they can trust to turn for advice and guidance. Mentoring creates meaningful connections that can positively impact the lives of both mentor and mentee. Those who receive mentorship are more likely to see improved academic, social, and economic prospects. Those who mentor are able to further build important leadership, management, and creative skills while giving back to their community. And that is why Big Brothers Big Sisters of Central California is leading the way in its success to build and bridge a new pathway for our next generation. Thank you for all you do to change the educational landscape and for your partnership with many to champion our greater global village. So with that, I welcome boys and girls, uh, big brothers, big sisters, to come and share.
Good morning, everybody, my name is Diane, I'm the Executive Director of Big Brothers Big Sister. I am truly honored and humbled to be here, we have some amazing people up here that I would like to introduce, so I'm not gonna take a lot of time, so let's go ahead and start with Angela, come on up and introduce yourself.
Good morning, my name is Angela Reese Alvarez, and I am the, um, Coordinator for After School Programs at Cutler Arosi Joint Unified School District.
Hi, everyone, my name is Guadalupe Adam, I am the High School Bigs Program Coordinator at Cutler Arosi.
Good morning, my name is Elizabeth Smith, and I'm the Operations Manager at Big Brothers Big Sisters of Central California.
Good morning, my name is Xenia Brizendine, I'm the High School Bigs Program Manager.
Morning, everyone, my name is Ray Medrigal, and I have the honor of being a member of the Board of Directors for this great agency.
Sorry. Good morning, my name is Yolanda Valdez, and I am the Superintendent Cutler Arosi, and I wanna cordially invite you to our 10-year anniversary of, uh, being a part of Big Brothers Big Sisters in Cutler Arosi, it has been a game changer for our community. On April 24th, come on out to Arosi High School at 5 o'clock, and we will be celebrating our partnership, uh, that has lasted for 10 years.
Good morning, I'm Sabrina Brown, Lupe's TA for Big Brothers Big Sisters.
We have Gustavo right there, say hi Gustavo. We wanted to bring, uh, we're, we service four counties, and I know we brought everybody, it's gonna be at least a couple hundred people, I said, so, actually, we have something important we wanna share with you guys, these guys are the superstar of our program, we have our bigs and their littles, and thank goodness, you know, Superintendent allowed them and their parents to come and join us to share about their experience with Big Brothers Big Sister, so please, um, let's go ahead and have each and every one of you introduce yourself, and they wanna share about the impact this program made for them. So come on, sweetheart. Can you guys see him? Can we lift him up?
I have the same problem.
Go ahead, sweetie. Yeah, you can read it, he's gonna read something.
My name is Derek Colvis, I am first grade. At Pop School, my big sister named Ashley Peña. I like playing with big brothers, big sisters because I get to see my big sister. We read together and we get to play games. Ashley is a good person and is always nice to me. She helps me with homework and ma- and math worksheets, I like to make projects with her, it is so fun. My favorite memory I have with my big sister is that we got to make snow out of marshmallows, and she gave me hers. I learned so many things from my sisters, and I am happy to be her little, thank you.
Did you guys hear that? Good job. So little Derek, he's very happy to have a big sister that help him with his homework and be there for him and do a lot of fun things in our after-school program, so thank you so much, that took, give me a high five, that took a lot of courage. So little, big sister, wanna share something? Good job.
My first involvement with the High School Bigs Program was back in 2014, however my role wasn't, however my role then wasn't as a big, it was as a little sister. I was referred to the High School Bigs Program because I was having a hard time with my academics. My big sister quickly became someone I highly admired, because she would not only help me complete my work, she would also engage in different activities with me. Since then, I wanted to experience what it would be like to be a big sister to a child in a sim- in a similar position as mine. When I began high school, I knew this was my opportunity to take the chance to become a big sister in the High School Bigs Program. I quickly signed up and attended a meeting that was held in a Step Up Center to discuss the enrollment process with the program coordinator, Guadalupe Adamen. Once I completed the volunteer application packet, I attended an interview in which I asked why I wanted to become a big sister. After the interview, it was only a matter of time before finding out if I had gotten accepted into the program or not. I soon received a letter and I was so happy to find out I had been accepted. I was thrilled to know that now it was my turn to not only help out a child in school, but also have fun. I am currently watch, matched with a cool little brother named Derek. He is very smart, funny, energetic, and a kind individual. During program, we work on different worksheets on his homework, one of which he has accomplished so far has been that he completed most first-grade math worksheets, and has now been so far has been that he completed most first-grade math worksheets and has now begun to work on second-grade math worksheets. He is a very outstanding boy who can accomplish his goals when he puts his mind to it. I have seen him grow socially and become more open to participating in both group and individual activities. I believe Big Brothers and Big Sisters is a very rewarding program. Plus, I had the opportunity of being a little and a big. It is, it has been a great experience. It is really important for children to have someone that can encourage them and to do good in school and get better grades and make positive decisions.
They're very excited. They want to share. Are you ready, little brother?
Okay.
Go ahead, sweetheart. Are you nervous? You're nervous? Do you want me to help you? What is your name?
Emmanuel.
Emmanuel. What grade are you in?
I'm in fourth grade.
Fourth grade where at?
Golden Valley.
And who's your big brother?
Juan.
And what do you like about your big brother?
He plays with me and lets me play the games. He lets me choose the games I want to play.
That's wonderful. Okay. And what's your favorite memory with your big brother?
I had...
Play soccer? You wrote down you liked to...
Play soccer together, and I have a lot of fun. I am happy to be with, be with big brother, big sister, and I'm happy to have a big brother like Juan.
Thank you. He's happy to have a big brother like Juan that's there for him. Okay, our big brother now.
All right. My name is Juan. I am one of the bigs at Cutler Orosi Joint Unified School District. Growing up, my mentor was always my dad. He was always teaching me right from wrong, helped me with school, and influences me to continue my education by going to college so that I don't end up in a life where working in the fields is an option. When I heard about this program, I immediately knew, I immediately knew I wanted to make the difference as well. I wanted to become that mentor in someone's life and help them, guide them into making good decisions and to offer support. It attracted me to become someone's role model in our community. I've gained mentoring skills throughout the program. I've learned about friendship, commitment, and how to be understanding. It has been an honor, an honor guiding my little through his journey, through his elementary school journey. My favorite part of it all has been teaching him new things, reading with him, and seeing him do better every day. This is why, to me, it's important to have a program like Big Brothers, Big Sisters because it not only changed my life for the better, but I know it definitely changed my daughter's life forever as well. Thank you.
That was amazing. Aren't they all amazing? Also, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. These are high school students giving back, paying forward, helping an elementary student to do better. We have a community-based program where we're looking for an adult over the age of 18 with a caring heart. We have hundreds of kids that needs a positive role model. Please, I'm reaching out to you. If you or you know someone that could give back, be a friend to a child, please contact our agency. And we are having a board for kids' sake. I hope all of you guys could come out there and help us and support us. We need more funding to hire more social workers like our staff to serve more children in this community. So I know it took a lot of your time. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, thank you. And this is why Big Brothers, Big Sisters is a model program throughout the state of California. So I will briefly highlight some of the main aspects of this proclamation and then present it to the Executive Director. So proclamation honoring Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Central California on their 50th anniversary. Whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Central California has been providing one-to-one mentorship to children of the Central Valley, including Tulare County since 1969, and has currently served over 10,000 children and their families. And whereas the mission of Big Brothers, Big Sisters is to help all children reach their potential by providing these children facing adversity with enduring, professionally-supported, one-to-one relationships that can improve their lives. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes and celebrates the 50th anniversary of Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Central California, commending them for their leadership and commitment to the children they serve. Thank you.
Yeah, I will, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Diane, would you just highlight real quick the presence that Big Brothers and Big Sisters has throughout Tulare County and how that has grown over the years? Because I think it's very important. You have a real success story in Cutler Orosi, but I know it's, there's more than Cutler Orosi that's impacted by your program. So maybe highlight that real quick for the audience?
Yeah, it's Ashley, my High School Bigs Coordinator, and she could tell you how many schools we have. Before, we start off with three High School Bigs Program, and we have more than 22 High School Bigs Program partnered with 20 school districts in the Central Valley. So do you want to talk about those schools?
Definitely. So in Tulare County, we are currently serving three sites in Dinuba. We have three sites in Orosi. We have a site in Visalia, and we have a site in Tulare as well.
So we're very excited. We appreciate you guys so very much. We are now measuring report cards, attendance, social, emotional. So everything that we do, we don't just talk the talk, we walk the walk. We work with the child, we work with their counselor, their teachers, their professional officer, their therapist, whatever we do, we work as a team because it takes a village to really help that child. So we're honored to be here, to be a part of this wonderful community. And honestly, guys, I need your help. The need is so great. We have so many kids on the waiting list just waiting for a positive role model. So please, reach out to us. We need you. It takes us as a team to work together. So thank you. And also, weren't you on our board as well, Pete?
I served on the board for three or four years, but you know, I think it's very important to really talk about why I did, and that was to really enhance the presence of what Big Brothers and Big Sisters did. They are Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Central California, but expanding the presence that they had in Tulare County was very important to me. And you have succeeded in that mission. And when I first got on the board, we were dealing with some simple issues such as even being able to own the building we were housed in, where the office was, and seeing where the organization has come from and where it is today. I really am very proud. Diane, we had the very easy choice of choosing you as Executive Director when I was on the board and worked with Ray a little bit. And you know, it's really nice to see the program doing well. I'm glad that we were able to take the time today to really highlight what you're doing because the impact you have on children, both the littles and the bigs, is truly amazing. And I thank you for all that you guys do and look forward to even more expansion services here provided in Tulare County.
We need more partners. Wink, wink.
I do know that there's a bigs in blue in Madera County, and so putting a charge out to Sheriff Mike Bedrow, a potential bigs in green, so just an FYI.
Supervisor, go ahead and come down, and we'll get a group photo. You're a little. Get in the front. We can send you these. Okay. Let's go ahead and get together. Angela, you guys trying to get the wood closer. Right here. Here we go. One, two, three. Diane, I'll get a few from yours. One, two, three. One more time. Hold on. Here we go. One, two, three.
Not an action item, correct? Any other board members want to make any other comments?
I'm good.
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and thank you, Diane, for bringing your crew, and hopefully we go on to another great 50 years serving the community. Our next item is item number three, and is another nice special occasion. Before we get into all the serious business, we are going to be recognizing our very own Marilyn Wright upon her retirement as the Ag Commissioner Sealer Department for many years of service. So Marilyn, why don't you come on up, and we got a nice coaster for you. I think it's frost-proof. So as, as most of you probably know, Marilyn is going to be retiring at the end of next month. She's still got a full, a full workload, and we'll find out what the industrial hemp discussion is going to be like. It could be even more work for her over the last month. I've already told Tom, make sure she doesn't take out her sick leave early. So you know, that's, that's a big concern for her. But Marilyn's served the county for 26 years, and she's done a lot of different things and really taken a leadership role on the citrus side, serving on the citrus research board, advocating on behalf of the county in Washington several times on key pieces of legislation and funding. So I've had the pleasure of working with you over the last two-plus years, and it's been a great honor to serve alongside you. Marilyn's always looking at things innovatively, and the Ag Commissioner's Office is really one of those key offices that, they may not get highlighted as much. I think in our county, we give them, we get a little more highlight than many of the other counties. There's 57 Ag Commissioners, or 56?
About 50. They share responsibilities in the small, 53?
53 out of the 58 counties have, have Ag Commissioners, and everyone else has them. They just have to share it. But it's, so it's a mandatory position from the state constitution, but it's something that, that, that has a, has a big impact. And yet, as regulators, you have, there's, there's a, an inherent animosity towards, towards who you're regulating. And yet, I think Marilyn and her staff do an excellent job balancing that with also being great advocates for agriculture. So it's, it's a, it's a fine line to be able to balance those two, but I think they do a great job with it. So with that, we're happy to present you with the highest honor we can bestow on anyone, the Seal of Tulare County. Congratulations for your years of service, and if you'd like to say anything.
Well, I've always appreciated the opportunities that working for Tulare County has afforded me, and having a supportive Board of Supervisors like I've always had has been tremendous because I go to annual meetings with other Ag Commissioners, and there's nothing more dreaded than the split board, and some, some of their board members not understanding where their food supply comes from. So really appreciate this and working with the other departments these years and friends of Tulare County. We'll have to find a new chair, but it's been fun to donate for local causes. And so being on that board has also been quite an experience, and I will miss everybody. And I know I've had growers that have tried to talk me out of retirement. You're too young. It's cold in Nebraska, but I know what I'm getting into because I grew up there, so I'm going home. Thank you.
I'll just say real quick, congratulations, Marilyn. It's been a real pleasure working with you in the various capacities I have over the last 10-plus years. I know that you've had a tremendous impact on agriculture, and it's like you said, you had several growers try to talk you out of it. That's the way that we look at our Ag Commissioner's Office here in Tulare County, that we are a partner in agriculture. We want to make our growers better. We want to make our food safer. And it's really a partnership, and not to mention the weights and measures. I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of gas stations out there that are going to miss you too, Marilyn. So you did a great job, and I really do thank you for your service, and I hope that you have the same impact in Nebraska that you had here in Tulare County. Take care. May the best be ahead for you.
Yeah, I'll miss in a, what, a year or so, seeing your name on, as I'm pumping gas. So I wish you the best. You've been very well respected here in the county, and the best to you.
Congratulations on your retirement.
Yeah, thank you, Marilyn, and also thank you for setting us up with Tom to come in behind you and getting us all ready for another several years ahead. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now we'll move on to item four, public comments. We now are seeking any public comments on anything within our jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda. If anyone has public comments, please come up to either microphone. Seeing none, we'll take up our consent calendar prior to our public hearing. Is there any items wishing to be pulled?
Mr. Chair, I know that we had spoken yesterday about removing item 24 to have the items, I'm sorry, the numbers updated to reflect the most recent flyover.
Yeah. Tim, if you could just orally update those, and I'll...
Yes, absolutely. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tim Lutz, HHSA Director. From the time that the agenda item was put in, we subsequently received the updated aerial flyover numbers. Wanted to verbally provide that information. So the U.S. Forest Service had released those results to us on February 11th. What, they determined what was that across California, there's an additional 18 million trees that have died from tree mortality on 2018. What that means for us locally is that we had an additional 3.7 million trees locally that died in 2018. That brings the total number of trees that have died in Tulare County from the tree mortality issues or the infestation from 2010 to 28 million 950,000 trees across the county. And that puts us about a third of the trees impacted across the state.
Well, we're number one in something. Thank you. Item 36, I'd like to pull for separate consideration, highlight.
What, 26? Do you want to highlight that, Supervisor Crocker?
No, I, well, just to, just to mention that item 26, I appreciate staff looking at this as we're continuing to partner with other local counties on things to make sure that we're, you know, ebbing the flows of whatever happens in Congress and our economy. So I appreciate that. Any other items?
If there's nothing else to be corrected and no public comment related to the consent calendar, I would move for approval, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Shucklin. Any further comments? Please cast your votes if not. And the motion passes unanimously. We will take up item 36. Thank you, Ross. You just highlight what we're doing. I know we have two, this has been an ongoing project, but we've got two new members, and I'm sure they've heard about it, but I think this is worthwhile to show what we've been doing there in Seville and Yeti.
Absolutely. So, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, Mr. CIO, County Counsel. The item before you, item number 36, is the ratification of a construction funding agreement for the construction of Phase 1 of the Yeti and Seville Water System Improvement Project. The project overall is to build a new water sys, our, Phase 1 of this project is to build a new water distribution system within the community of Seville, as well as a large water storage tank in the community of Seville. Ultimately, there will be a second phase of this project, which will connect the communities of... of Yetam and Seville with a pipeline along State Route 201 between the two, as well as improvements and a new well within Yetam. The system ultimately will be taken over and managed by a new CS, well, the two water systems currently that will be connected will ultimately be taken over and managed by a new CSD that has been formed, the Yetam-Seville Community Services District, which as of last week had their first meeting, elected their officers and all the other fun things that come with establishing a new government entity like that. So for this project, we are actually going to be holding a groundbreaking event on March 5th at 3:00 PM. I have some flyers, I will give these to Melinda to pass to you guys and I will put some more over there. And with that summary, is there any questions about this project? Any considerations?
Hope this is the first of many. Look for a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Valero. Please cast your votes. Carries unanimously. Thank you Ross.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to our 9:30 timed item at 9:50. And we'll have a continuation of item number five, our Fire Hazard Abatement Cost Recovery. Fire Chief Norman. The Sunday Best.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board, CIO Jeff. Thank you for hearing this today, continuing the public hearing and putting some resolutions to weed abatement as well as moving some items forward. If, and I can cover the Senate's entirety, do you want this 10 minutes or less?
Sure. 10 minutes or less is great.
Absolutely.
I think we've heard it quite a bit.
Yes, you have. As a list of parcels and recommended reduced hazard abatement, we did do some additional analysis with the CIO's office, purchasing as well as County Counsel. And looking at these versus what we have as far as billed with the 110 hour contracted versus a 300 per acre, there were some perceived and with staff input, I'd recommend that we go from the 61,000 abated and reduce it by 34,663 for a tax rule total of 26,661. And look at absorbing the $34,000 into the budget or possibly getting some assistance from the CIO's office with that. A parcel by parcel with the Marass property, that would reduce, a total reduction of 8,800 for a total down from 13,005 to 4,674. The Zavala property would be reduced from 4,455 to 16,68, a reduction of 27,8718. And on the Hovenesian Family Limited Partnership, it would go from 3,400 to 1,600 with a total reduction of 15,7748. And on the Mattos property, it would be 4748 with a total cost of 12,34, reduction of 35,14. And on the James property, that would go from 26,83 to 1,963, reduction of 720. And on the Security Pacific National Bank, from 32,484 to 15,288, a reduction of 17,1196. And looking forward with this, there were a couple of billing areas, billing errors that looked to outside acreage which were charged by the employee instead of by the acreage as well as a contract. So not deducting the dump fees, there was a variety of errors contractual. And moving forward, we'll look to receive public comment today as well as looking at a revision, going out for an RFP within the next, come back to you in 60 days. Working with the purchasing department, explore some fire department options, possibly doing it in-house, looking at enhancing our social media program with giving people options prior to abatement. And there are some other aggressive points, Kern County, Kings County, do some more aggressive administrative citations. So look at going through, reviewing our process and doing this within the next 60 days so we can hit the wood abatement cycle so we can avoid any type of challenges next hazard season. And I would entertain any questions you might have. That was kind of the...
Very good Chief. I forgot to do a few procedural things as I need to look at my script from my phone. So, so the hearing was open, is open, we'll do that. Was there any new witnesses that haven't previously testified at either of the past two meetings that we need to swear in, that the Chief Clerk will swear in? Well, administer the oath. I did that wrong the last time too. I'm consistent.
Well, he's, he testified previously, so he remains under oath?
No, I recognize that. I haven't gotten to that part of the script yet, Madam Counselor, that you provided me. So everyone else that, that has already testified is still under oath. So just a nice reminder for that, and includes you Chief. And you provided your presentation, so now we'll go to any members of the Board have any questions for staff at this time.
Mr. Chair, I'll just make a comment. Chief, looking at the last slide and talking about the go-forward approach, you know, Tulare County's Fire Department still is a relatively young entity and there are going to be these different issues that we come across as we move forward. But I think you've taken a very comprehensive and proactive approach here to make sure we don't have this situation going forward. And I hope that we will also use this experience in the scoring, maybe this is for purchasing, of contractors as they come forward, you know, and make sure that a past contractor experienced maybe overcharging in some instances where they shouldn't have and having that be taken into account as we score new proposals going forward. I think that's important as well. But you know, taking a tough situation and really diving into it and making sure that at the end of the day, the constituents are kept right. You know, it's worth sucking up the 34,000 on this one to correct some of the errors that were made, but I'm confident that won't happen again.
Absolutely.
And I would just like to say too, that I'm excited and looking forward for having the county work on a cohesive abatement program in order to rectify these issues in the future. And so thank you for your due diligence on this matter and moving it forward.
More comments? At this time, we'll take any comments from parcel owners or other interested parties. If you'd like to make any additional comments, now's the time. Please state your name and address for the record. And again, if you've already spoken, you're still under oath.
Good morning. I'm Mario Mattis. Anyway, I'm not here to complain anymore. I just want to thank you guys for pretty much making it right. I appreciate it. And in the future, I think we're headed in the right direction. Looks like what I've read. So thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none. Does staff have any additional comments or recommendations to make at this time? Seeing none. Any other board questions, comments?
If there's nothing further, Mr. Chair, I would move for approval of this assessment.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Townsend. Thank you staff. I just, you know, I know this wasn't necessarily easy and you know, third time's the charm in this case, but I appreciate doing the due diligence to really look at the numbers and try and figure out what's, what's appropriate amount. So I appreciate that. I know it wasn't easy, but, but thank you everyone that was involved.
I'm just glad we're not continuing it again.
Right, exactly. I think the, the property owners are glad too. So with that, please cast your votes. And the votes are unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Now we'll go to our untimed items and we will begin with item 55. Approve of position allocation, changes and amending existing classification specifications for the Office of our District Attorney, Tim Ward.
Good morning Chairman Crocker, members of the Board. It's always a pleasure to be here, but I know looking ahead on the calendar that you would wish me to be brief so you can have more time to talk about hemp. Once again, I'm standing before the Board asking for your continued commitment to support us in our endeavors to keep our community safe and serve two functions that the Office of the District Attorney does. One being, if you will, the prosecution of cases that occur inside the courthouse and to some degree, the investigation of cases out and about in our community with our Bureau of Investigations. I'm here asking for a series of add and deletes, add and deletions, excuse me, to our position allocations. And if I could, I'll take them kind of in two, in two groups. First, with regard to the DMV auto theft program. And as a historical context, in about 1995, my predecessor came to the Board with the cooperation of many of the existing city agencies. When the vehicle code changed and there was an allotment that was put inside the California Vehicle Code allowing law enforcement and prosecutors' offices to attach a $1 fee onto the registration of vehicles that are registered in California, in the county. And those funds, the Board in 1995 voted to approve it obviously. And those funds from the $1 fee come back to the county and they go to our office, the District Attorney's Office, and they go to the participating city agencies in our county to fund what is known as the Tulare County Regional Auto Theft Task Force. Since 1995, our office used the allocated funds to have one full-time Deputy District Attorney assigned to prosecute cases involving auto theft, chop shop type cases, and one full-time criminal investigator, a police officer that was assigned in the field, if you will, to the task force with the other city agencies. And California Highway Patrol, I should say, is an integral part of that, that are out on the, on the streets, if you will, investigating and sending those cases to us. Couple of things have happened since then. First and foremost, there was an agreement that the Superior Court here in Visalia allowed all of our auto theft cases, no matter what jurisdiction they arose out of, to be prosecuted inside a courtroom in the Visalia Courthouse. That was a matter of convenience for us. Our one prosecutor would be stationed inside the Visalia Courthouse even if the case arose out of the southern portions of our county. With the addition and creation of the South County Justice, the new courthouse, the courts no longer honored that, that agreement. We didn't have that convenience factor. Those auto theft cases were sent down to the south, Southern courthouse where they had original jurisdiction. Since that time, we've also seen just a dramatic increase in the number of cases that we're prosecuting. I believe in our paperwork that we submitted since the fiscal year 1415 timeframe to now, the number of auto theft cases that we've prosecuted have more than doubled. Also, what we have seen in the last really two years, I'll say it this way, the Porterville Courthouse now has more filed auto theft cases than the Visalia Courthouse. So we've seen just a migrating shift in the demand and the need for where our resources are. What we're asking for is to let us delete the criminal investigator position that has been dedicated to that and add a full-time Deputy District Attorney who will be stationed inside the Porterville Office for us to handle those cases coming out of South County. Now I realize that we are in a way, no longer going to be focused directly on a day-to-day basis in the investigation of cases down with auto theft. And I would love to be in a position to continue that. From a fiscal standpoint, we would be asking for much more money, if you will. So we're trying to be as physically responsible as we can and quite frankly, recognizing that our first and foremost priority is we are the only entity in the county that prosecutes the cases. There are, quite frankly, other law enforcement agencies that are conducting auto theft investigations, but we're the only prosecutor. We've seen those other agencies really stepping up to the plate. And I'll say it anecdotally, since Prop 4757 changes, we've seen more and more of the city agencies involved outside of T-Rat. Only about 20 to 30% of our total auto theft caseload comes from the task force. Other agencies obviously are looking into this as well. So going forward, meeting the challenges and the requirements that our local Superior Court has placed on us and the actual indication of where the cases are occurring, we're just not in the position to have one prosecutor traveling back and forth multiple days because the cases are being heard in the same time. She can't simply be in two places at once. So we're asking to add a full-time prosecutor that will be assigned to our Porterville Division to handle those cases. I'll tell you though, that we're not walking away from the fight against auto theft in the field. We've already told the, the task force that our office will stand to help on any, any task force need. We do it already with our game task force and our, and our other groups out there. So if there's a need for investigative help, our police officers inside our office will stand ready to assist. So that's kind of the first move. When we make that move, interestingly enough, we will actually be saving the office a little bit of money rolling forward. Not only this year, but in fiscal year 1920 and going forward, we'll have a small amount of savings to our budget, which rolls me into the second request that we're making. We're also requesting to add to our position allocation list, two full-time prosecution assistants. We've had the title prosecution assistant position on the rolls for, for a little bit. We're taking this opportunity to change and really bring up to kind of the, the current theme of what the, the office needs are with regard to the requirements. Two full-time prosecution assistants, basically in essence paralegals, but it's not written that way. We found historically that we've had individuals going to law school that have worked in that function. And it's really an assistant to the prosecutors in the office. To pay for that, we're also bringing to the table deletion of a vacant legal office assistant position that we have on the books but is unfield. And the reason that we're doing this change is really aligning the office with the changes that have come out of Sacramento and the workload that we're seeing in our office that has to be done. And quite frankly, we're paying for, we would be paying for someone to do this, either a prosecutor at a much higher hourly salary. We're trying to be as physically responsible we can. And I think this stuff that we can use prosecution assistants for will be beneficial to us in the long run. Just as a little bit of background on that, and we put in our, our agenda item, a lot of the changes coming out of Sacramento that have added on to our workload. The good news in the county is we're on a five-year low of crime. Crime's down about 15%. There's a lot of good news going on with our county and our law enforcement partners. But as our caseload goes down, what we're seeing is our workload's going up from these unfunded mandates coming out of Sacramento. One thing that we are absolutely needing these prosecution assistants to do right now is to assist our prosecutors in reviewing body cam footage. We put some statistics inside the motion that until they put it to paper, I knew it was a problem. I had no idea honestly, the magnitude of the problem. As you know, many of our police agencies in, in our communities have instituted the use of body cameras. And I think we all agree that that is a good thing. That impacts us because we have to download, we have to find them, we have to download them, we have to store them, we have to transfer them, we have to view them as part of our criminal case. And I just want to make sure I don't misquote the numbers. So far, and it's changed, in 2016, we had about 240 viewing hours of body cams. It was starting to roll out. In 2018, we downloaded over 70,000 video files. In 2018, we downloaded over 70,000 video files. We're looking at about nearly 3,000 viewing hours of tape. That's more than a year at eight hour, or 40 hours a week of a full-time employee. This is a drain on our prosecutors. It needs to be done, it's a good thing, but instead of paying for a prosecutor to sit at a computer and download and do all that, we're trying to be as physically responsible and have, in essence, I'll sometimes call them paralegals, but our prosecution assistants do those things. There's a myriad of other functions, working with our truancy programs, working with our community accountability programs, our community diversion courts, and things like that that we can have these prosecution assistants do. Going forward, using the deletion of the LOA and the money saved from the DMV fund, we still, unfortunately, at this point in time, this would impact our budget in 1920 by about $60,000. We're more than able to cover the cost, if you will, for this fiscal year. But as we project right now, there will be, as we do this, a small impact to our budget, but quite frankly, that's changing. I, looking at our position allocations of our prosecutors and the number of vacancies that we have, and that's another reason that you're more than familiar with, we're having a difficult time hiring prosecutors. So what was spread across 50, 55 prosecutors, now we have 45 to 50 doing the work of all of them. But I believe that our overall salary costs are going to go down next year, looking at the turnover and the replacements that we have. But that's where we're at right now. This is a need that we have based upon the changes coming out of Sacramento and the additional workload that we've got, and what was the convenience factor, working with our Superior Court and having those cases here, and we were able to have one prosecutor handle all these cases. We simply can't do it now to provide the Porterville Courthouse, the staff, and the service that they need down there. And it aligns us with the future. As you know, there will be a time in our tenure in a few years, we'll have a brand-new building and more staff down in Porterville, and this aligns with our strategic goal, if you will, of meeting that need. So that's where we're at. I'm asking for your continued support in helping us kind of amend and change and adopt what we're doing as an office to the future of things that some, that sometimes are outside our control, but neither, but nonetheless are impacting us today. So what we're specifically adding is on there, we're asking to add a full-time deputy district attorney, delete a full-time criminal investigator, but I'll say that we're not laying anyone off. We have the, the timing of this is set specifically right now because with the promotion in our investigations, we have an investigator position that is vacant. So deleting that position will not in any way put anyone's job at risk, if that makes sense. We're also asking to delete a legal office assistant position and add to our allocation two full-time positions called prosecution assistants.
I just, I wanted to ask a question. So first of all, I just want to say, good job as usual, Tim, keeping your presentation brief, and really didn't expect that from an attorney. But given that...
And I didn't make a joke about how old you were in 1995.
Given that, Mr. DA, I wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, I'm just curious, your comment about crime on the decline in the county, how much of that is really truly a decrease in crime versus a change in the definition of what is considered a crime versus felony misdemeanor, et cetera?
Well, that is a, that is a great question, and I just spoke to the Tulare Leadership Group last week, and I did a PowerPoint presentation called Kind of the State of the County. And let me preface it by saying, I'm not necessarily the best indicator of crime. I can tell you, crime cases submitted to our office throughout the county. So in some degree, that is solved crime, right? That police agencies have investigated. So in that regard, cases coming into us have continued over the last five years to drop, about a 15 percent drop overall in the number of cases coming to us. This is not a manufactured number of us saying, we're going to file less cases to artificially delete. I'm talking about cases submitted into us are down 15 percent. Gang cases are down, depending on who you talk to. Our numbers show our violent gang cases over that same period, I'll say, last three, four years, are down about 30 percent. I don't speak for the sheriff, and I'm not sure if he's still here. I've talked to him, that I believe he says in some parts of our county, violent crime, gang crime is down 40 to 50 percent. There's a lot of good news. You bring up a very, very, really a talking point that no one's talking about, and that is, as we see crime going down, after Prop 47, what was felony cases became misdemeanor cases. The next year, we saw an increase in misdemeanor cases. That was simply because what was a felony is now a misdemeanor. What we expected to see was those cases maybe start creeping up because of Prop 47, and we hear, we read about it every day, you know, crime is up. We haven't seen it. We have seen an increase in some of the felony cases, but those are not Prop 47-related. Our domestic violence, our elder abuse, auto theft, there are a few little crime types that are up. Here's what's down that I think is shocking to the communities, misdemeanor theft-related cases. And I believe they're down because our merchants are not reporting. I believe there is a consensus in our communities that the justice system can't solve this, and it's just not worth their time. It's a cost of doing business, and I don't like that at all. Because what I'm trying to, and I'm starting to get out more and more on the circuit, what I'm telling the chambers is, just because they were what you think is a petty criminal to your store, they may have impacted other, and other stores, and in our world, we can consolidate, and now we're talking about potentially a much more serious crime. Please report. But I think you're talking about something that we're seeing anecdotally is people aren't reporting. It's a topic that needs to be talked about, but there is a lot of good news. Crime is down, violent crime is down. There's some not-so-good news, our early release from CDCR based on Prop 57, the percentage of inmates in CDCR that have been early released doubled in the last two years, so we're starting to see more of that population returning to our streets, so.
That was very helpful information, thank you for that, because we don't always get that, so I appreciate that. But the second question I wanted to ask, you talk about logistical constraints of operating in Porterville, and then also here in Visalia with limited staff. Do you see additional opportunities for collaboration with the courts, conversations that may need to be had in order to keep costs that you're incurring, and I'm sure other justice departments are incurring because of that logistical challenge?
Yes, I do envision that as the courts go through changes, they have funding issues as well, I'm hearing, and well, we've had meetings with, based on the new law, we've got, we collectively have to come up with a mental health diversion program pursuant to the new law. We've had meetings on that. That's going to be added resources. Now, does that mean that our current existing mental health court may migrate into something else? As a collective, we'll decide that, but I think the courts are going through some changes as well. We are having, I'm having meetings with the presiding judge and court staff as to what the future of Porterville may look like departmentally speaking because of potential changes in losing judges. I think that that will be adding from, and this is very preliminary, please don't hold me to it, and I'm not asking, I think the court intends to add another department down in Porterville at some point in time. And we'll have to collectively, and I think Ms. Berlino, the public defender, and I will be impacted by that if and when it happens, but we continue to be engaged in that to see if we can come to a mutually agreeable situation. But the reality is, they have their own independent outside influences, Justice Sacramento has outside influences on things that we do and stuff, so we've got to work together. But I, I don't see, I just don't see a way right now that we can collectively get together and reduce the overall workload for everyone without adding more, right? We're trying to do less, more with less, instead of doing, you know, more with more.
Thanks.
Other questions, comments from the board?
Yeah, so, good morning, District Attorney Tim Ward. So, yep, with new leadership and new environment sometimes comes with new organization, and as you've been in your position for a few years now, you've had time to review your structures and systems in place, and so I thank you for your oversight in seeing what's best for the, your office in particular, but also the county more generally. And so thank you for coming to us this morning with your updates. And with that, if there are no other questions, I'd move to make a motion.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Valero, second by Supervisor Townsend. Did anyone else want to comment, members of the public? I just say, I appreciate, you know, this is the second time that you've come before is where you're looking, you're always have a continuous improvement outlook, so I appreciate that from your department, and it's not just more, but there's also a reorg to help with that. I think our C.A.O. maybe wants to share something.
Just one thing real quickly, DA Ward, is are the impacts of the changes in terms of the felony, violent felony murder rule and some of the death penalty cases also driving some of this?
Absolutely. If, with AB 1431 or 37, I forget the, I forget the number, basically, every single murder conviction that we have, or murder case that we have pending, or any murder case that we have convicted is subject to filing a petition with us and having a rehearing to determine culpability. And I won't get into the legal thing, but if you imagine that, that's 1,000 more murder cases that we've got to look at. Our Prop 47 petitions, it's about 4,000 of those petitions that we received. Marijuana petitions, we've gotten those. Prop 57, the early release, the direct file, or the transfer hearings required in juvenile, all of those things absolutely are requiring senior prosecutors to look at these complex issues. Now, the Prop 47 stuff, I'll say, those are, those are a little more easier to look at. We've also have, we spend a lot of time with new motions, and I'll forget the code section, forgive me, we may have put it in our paperwork, individuals that were convicted of a crime that, at the time of their sentencing or conviction, may not have been advised of the full immigration consequences of their conviction. The law changed that allows them to apply for relief. All of those we're having review. I cannot give you numbers, but I will tell you that the impact, as that, as our caseload goes down, our workload has increased dramatically, and none of those programs that are coming out of Sacramento unfortunately have a dollar amount attached that I can come to you and say, these are, these are grant-funded. I have often said, these are unfunded mandates. But usually, when I come before the board asking for something, we've found a way to pay for it. I've found a way to pay for most of this, but with your support, we'll make it work. But I'm very concerned about that, Mr. Britt. They continue to add things to me, to Ms. Berlino's office as well, with no attached funding.
Very good. All right, cast your vote.
Chairman, just to clarify, Supervisor Valero, that was a motion to approve the request?
Motion to approve, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then if you could just clear your button, because it's a two...
Was there a second?
There was a second. Supervisor Townsend, correct?
Yep.
All right, now vote.
You're going to want to...
Doing the lights...
We're a well-loaded machine this morning.
You've got to press the office.
The machine stopped working because your presentation was so...
Are we cleared now?
John, I know you want to talk about hemp.
Button is marked.
Oh.
There you go, thank you.
Okay, all right, there we go.
Thank you.
It's all right.
The motion was...
The motion was unanimous, it was approved. Supervisor Valero was having technical difficulties with his manual buttons. All right, we will, item 56 is pulled off calendar, I didn't say that earlier, but it's pulled off calendar and will come back at a later date, so we'll not take that item up. We will move on to item 57, a request from the Health and Human Services Agency to approve the Tulare County Council on Child and Youth Development Needs Assessment.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jason and counsel. My name is Vienna Barnes, I'm the Deputy Director for Tulare Works, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. I have with me Samantha Terry, she is the Child and Youth Development Council Manager, and we're here to provide a brief overview of the council and the assessment that was recently done, and then seek your approval on approving the Tulare County Needs Assessment. So I'm going to turn it over to Samantha.
Good morning, thank you guys so much for your time, I'm really excited to be here. Before I get started, I did want to give credit to our consultant that helped us put this report together. He allowed me to use some of his pieces of his report in his presentation, so I don't want to take credit for all of this awesome work. So before we get started, I wanted to give an overview of the council, just in case you weren't aware. All councils were established in 1991 by Congress to help set the need for the low-income families. So we set the priorities, we are kind of the voice for Tulare County, that way the state knows where the childcare needs are. Our council, here is our logo, and then we are funded by the California Department of Education. We have multiple mandates that we have to uphold, and one of the large ones being, we create a needs assessment which identifies a childcare need every five years, and we advocate for this and share this with our community members. The most recent needs assessment that was comprehensive, detailed, like 100 pages, was completed in 2008. It stopped after that because all councils received a 50 percent budget cut in 2010. So in order to still uphold this, we weren't required to complete a comprehensive one, rather just provide data with a template. But in 2017, we wanted to go into depth and find out where is our need since 2008, and so we were able to leverage funding. We didn't want to prohibit our limited budget to stop us from serving our children and families, so we received a First Five Project grant to help pay for the consultant, as well as Tulare County Office of Education, Early Childhood Education Program, and the council, kind of sad, a small portion, we were able to contribute to this. We contracted with a consultant, Dr. Steve Russos, with the Alliance for Community Research and Development, and we had a needs assessment committee, which I'll review next. They are a voluntary group of wonderful knowledgeable women in early care and education, and we wanted to make sure we provided accuracy on our data, so they worked with us to provide that. So the reason we do this, obviously, is to meet the requirement for California Department of Education, also to understand the need across our county so we can serve our children and families, and to provide data to use in projects, grants, and plans. So this report is something that we just don't hold on to, we're going to share with our community. The data that was provided in it has actually been used for grant writing already, so it's definitely being used as well to help serve our children. So as I said, it was led by the needs assessment committee, we had representatives from First Five Tulare County, CSAT, HHSA, early care, oops, I'm so sorry. Back, back, back. So a lot of different agencies that helped review this, that way, like I said, we want to have accuracy. It took a year, so we started in November 2017 and finally finished in November 2018. A lot, I can tell you, I've read this so many times, I'm tired of reading it, but we evaluated it, we corrected, refined it, we used local input to ensure accuracy as well. So you might wonder, why, why do we need early care and education? This is so incredibly important. Research shows that zero to five is the most important time of a child's life, and the most brain development happens at zero to three. So just hearing that, you know, we're not just placing these kids somewhere, no, they need high-quality care, because what we do now is going to impact who they become and what they do in our community. So the two top reasons why we need early care and education is, a lot of mothers are going back into the workforce, I'm one of them, and have children, and so these women, as early as six weeks after they have their children, need to have care for their child because they're not able to provide that for themselves. So we need that, and it's not just care, we need high quality. As I mentioned, what we do now is impacting these children and families. Also, parents are going back to school to further their education, to provide a better financial situation for their family. Research also shows that children that are enrolled in high-quality early care and education programs are going to lead to a better graduation rate and a better community, I'm sorry, citizen in our community. So just investing in that early years, not only in early care, but intervention and services for family, is so critically important. So all the data that we received was from 2016, I know that's a little late, but that's the main database that we use for this report that California Department of Education wants us to use, but there isn't a lot of differences. So there's three different age groups that we evaluate in this report, infant and toddlers, which is zero to two, and so at that time, 21 percent of the kids' population from zero to 12 were infant and toddlers. 27 percent were preschoolers, which is three to five, and 52 percent were school-aged children. Now, that's a larger population and age range, so that's why they're a little bit more. Now, that's a larger population and age range, so that's why they're a little bit more. We evaluated different working families based on their income. So we have working families, working low income families, low income, and then below federal poverty level. So there's different instances and availability for services for these families. And we found in our report, the largest population of children, zero to twelve, are in low income and below federally poverty, poverty level in Tulare County. And those families are the ones that need the most need, they're not gonna have as much access and financial ability to provide that care for their family. So overall, in this beautiful ninety-two page document, the end need is, there is a huge unmet need in Tulare County. I do want to acknowledge that Tulare County, we do a phenomenal job, we have a great collaborative effort, not as in a lot of other counties. So I'm so thankful to work here and, and work on this collaboration, but we still, there's more we can do. So, for working families, which includes all families despite income level, because some families need care no matter what at some point in time. It showed that seventy-seven percent of infant and toddlers are not being served. Sixty-one percent of preschoolers are not being served, and eighty-seven percent of school aged children are not being served. You can see just by that, there's a huge need. Now, let's take it a little step further, and this is low income family, and as I mentioned, this has a higher population rate of children. So eighty-six percent of infant and toddlers are not being served. Fifty-eight percent of preschoolers are not being served, and eighty-eight percent of school aged children are not being served. So that was kind of the basis, the main thing that we have found in our report. And so, in the packet that you received, you did receive an infographic, which is a two-page report, that kind of highlights the most important findings that we have found in this report. I know you guys are busy, you might not have the time to read this ninety-two page document, so we wanted to highlight for you important things that you need to know. So, some counties, I'm not sure how they do it, but when we started this report, we didn't want it to be created just to, here, here it is, and let it sit on a shelf. We want to be very active with it. There is a need, and we want to move forward with that. So we're gonna be sharing this document, our infographic, with our community members. Every year, the council does a legislative event, and this year, November seventh, we're doing a luncheon, and we're gonna have the consultant come down and provide a little more in-depth, knowledgeable overview of this. We're gonna share this with our community members. And also, another mandate that we have to do is create a comprehensive countywide childcare plan. That's really hard to say. But we have to provide a collaborative effort on how we're gonna meet this need. The councils were not funded nor created to implement services, rather, we are the hub for data, we are the voice, we identify the need, and we bring people together to work together and leverage that funding to serve those children. So we're, we haven't done that report in a long time. So we're gonna do, after our legislative event, we're gonna hold community forums. That way, everyone that provides services to children and families can work with us, and we, together as a team, can move forward. And hopefully, when we complete this report again in five years, we've helped minimize some of the need. We can accomplish it all in five years, but I believe with Tulare County, we can, we can definitely make a step forward. And that was my little overview, if we have any questions?
Questions from the boards, comments?
I have a question with regards to sharing this information. How involved are school districts in implementing and providing these kind of recommendations and utilizing them for their districts?
Yes, so we do have some representatives. So on our council, we do have required memberships that we have to fill, and some of them, we are allowed to have school districts. At this time, we have Porterville and Lindsay School District, but they work with a preschool. So there is legislation going on now, because there is a slight gap between, you know, the transition between preschool and TK and kindergarten. And so, we're hopeful, if legislation changes, we are going to be required to have that buy-in and L P C, our councils are gonna work towards kind of bridging that gap and bringing them in to know what the needs are. So it's gonna be available, we're gonna distribute it, and hopefully have a more active opportunity to include them.
Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Samantha, do you put on workshops as to how to present in a concise manner that maybe you'd be willing to put on for our district attorney?
I practice this a lot, let me tell you, I'm pretty sure I'm sweating right now, so...
Good job, Samantha. But, no, and, and really, I appreciate the work of the council, I know you were up here to speak on their behalf, but it, it's really great to have this data regarding this population. It's often overlooked within the, the community, and I know that Governor Newsom has really made a early childhood education push in making that more readily available, and I hope that that does come to fruition, because with funding, this is going to really help this population. But as the father of two that are, actually of three that are all in these subject age groups, it's important to know that they're being looked after from an educational and governmental perspective. So I appreciate the presentation and look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, you have to hear it again on Thursday, sorry.
And yes, thank you for the night, not bringing the ninety-two page, and thank you for, for taking care of it. I, you know, the word here to me is unmet needs, and so, I think it's, you know, our duty to meet the needs of all our, our citizens in Tulare County, so thank you for that.
Just want to make a brief comment again, and, and I know a lot of it goes back to funding, but I will share that Cutler Rossi recently received a grant that will allow us to have, or allow the Cutler Rossi Joint Unified School District to have all-day preschool, starting in twenty nineteen.
That is wonderful, and that's what I, you know, we're striving for and have been striving for, it's preschool for all. So we're hopeful with our new governor that we can get there, that all children have that opportunity.
I had some comments, I, I did read the ninety-two page report.
I am so impressed, thank you.
Yeah, I wish I hadn't, though, because...
There you go.
I, I was, I was a little disappointed that the tone of it was, I felt it was negative towards agriculture. And I think it, we need to recognize that agriculture is a key player in our county, and it helps, provides a lot of mobile upward, upward, or upward mobility, and that it helps us out. And so, I, I recognize that many of the statistics came from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and so there was, it's very broad from the county perspective, but there's, there's a, there's a lot more data gaps that are there that specify whether or not workers receive housing, and that doesn't necessarily equate to income, but it's still a benefit, and so their costs are lower. And so, so I'd, I'd, you know, in the, and as well as, I, and this was in the report, and so I appreciate that this was in the report, but when, when individuals advocate for minimum wage increases, there's an impact on something like childcare, and that was placed here. And so, when we have minimum wage impacts, and it doesn't just help out individuals, it also hurts the same people that are getting the minimum wage increases are now having to pay for a higher cost for childcare. And so, that puts on a, a negative impact on that, and so I think it's, we need to recognize that. Granted, we're not doing that at this body, but as we advocate, there are negative impacts that are, that are happening directly. So, I know you, you stated that there's more we can do, and so I'd encourage that we, we do that. It's one thing to have a, a needs assessment, but it's another thing to actually have action. And we don't like reports that sit on, that sit on shelves. And so, you know, bringing people together and seeing what are action plans, and I think we can, we know that there's an issue, we know that there's, that we have poverty in our community, but it's a matter of taking that to the next step, and what are actions? What are, I appreciate the trainings that you mentioned, as far as training childcare providers and, and doing those. Those, I think, are positive results that come out of it, things that, that are actually doable steps. So, there's no other further comments, or members of the public that'd like to comment, I'd entertain a motion. Second? By Supervisor Shuckland, second by Supervisor Valero, please cast your votes.
Thank you so much.
Votes are unanimous.
Thank you.
Now, I'll move on to item fifty-eight. Set annual salary and benefits for the position of retirement administrator. Rhonda?
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the board, C A O, Mr. Britt, and Ms. Peterson, Rhonda Schustrom, Tulare County Human Resources Director. The item before you is a request to set the annual salary for the position of retirement administrator in Bargaining Unit Ten in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand. The same standard benefits provided to Bargaining Unit Ten employees with an additional benefit of auto allowance of four hundred and forty-seven dollars per month, it would be effective March thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. And the reason for this request is that your long-term current retirement administrator, Dave Keeler, has announced that he intends to retire on March twenty-ninth. And under the government code, the retirement board has the sole authority to appoint and terminate the retirement administrator, but the Board of Supervisors sets the salary and the compensation for that position. So the request is to take the recommended salary, set at one sixty-five, along with the auto allowance and other special benefits.
Mr. Chair, as the board's representative on the retirement board, it would have been nice to know as a retirement board member that Mr. Keeler was even retiring. Roland, did you know that? I'm kidding. Now, it, it's an interesting arrangement, but this is a function of the Board of Supervisors to set, it's, it's almost similar to some of the arrangements we have with like T CAG and other entities, and so this is something that the retirement board has been going through a process for, and did make an announcement that we were going to be naming Leanne Malison, the replacement for Dave Keeler. And so, I'm very happy to see that we're moving this forward, and I would move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
By Supervisor Vanderpoel, second by Supervisor Shuckland. Any further comments, questions, members of the public? Seeing none, cast your vote. Motion is approved unanimously. Five-zero, Ms. Melinda. All right, we'll go on to items, we're gonna take up items fifty-nine, sixty, and sixty-one all at once.
That is, that is correct, Chairman Crocker, supervisors, C A O, Jason Britt, county council. I am Aaron Bach, I am the interim assistant director, also known as the interim planning director.
I really look forward when you'd give presentations, Aaron, you know, it just, the tenor of it is outstanding.
Well, thank you, Mr. Crocker.
You're the only one.
I, I, I do come up here to amuse you. So, the, this project is the approval of the Phase One Final Map, for Final Tentative Map seven eighty-nine, including the proceedings to form assessment districts, numbers eighteen dash seven eighty-nine and eighteen seventy-nine R, and that's for the storm drainage and road maintenance assessment districts for this project. I was asked to give a more global picture today about where we're at in regards to housing in this county, especially since that seems to be a very big platform for the governor. In regards to R E N A, the regional housing need allocation, just so everybody's comfortable here, our housing element is good till two thousand twenty-four, so we got the eight-year program, not the five-year program, so we should be pretty safe in that regard. In regards to our total R E N A number, that's seven thousand eighty-one units for Tulare County, as dictated to us by the Department of Finance and through T CAG. So where are we at in regards to that number? We've built about twelve percent of that since two thousand fifteen, that's six hundred and seventy units. That's a hundred and forty-two were permitted in this last year. You will be given these numbers again very shortly when we do our annual report for the general plan and the housing element, so these are preliminary and a little bit in fluctuation right now, but within two to three units for the most part. So that leaves us a remaining six thousand four hundred and eleven units through two thousand twenty-four, averaging a hundred and sixty-eight units per year. We'll probably get around ten percent by two thousand forty, looking at the full outlook of the R T I P, and how we do our traffic studies, and how they allocate housing. Looking out to two thousand forty, you'll be looking about ten percent by then. The most important number H C D is looking at is the low income housing number. We've been given about thirty-five percent allocation to low and very low income. We're sitting about twenty percent of all our units in the county that have actually been built, but the low number, thirty-two percent, shows some promise, very low, fourteen percent year over year, and gaining. So, we're never really gonna hit our target of seven thousand eighty-one units, but we're doing a pretty good job of keeping consistent with our low income housing. The county has three times the needed zoned lands for housing, and we've increased that number dramatically with the community plans, I'd say upwards of another thousand acres. So the real question comes down to availability of housing, and what I mean by availability and as the legislature's looking more and more closely to is infrastructure. So these are tentative maps we have rolling around in the county. As you can see, most of them were approved during the heights of the markets back in two thousand five and two thousand six. We've had very few, as Mr. Vanderpoel's been aware of, the tentative maps we have gotten approved over the last five years, so we've really pushed to get them done, but they have not really come to fruition as far as final maps in front of you. So we, we do try to help out these projects as best we can. Rough guess, I mean, you're probably talking in the five hundred unit range here, that could come to final map in the next couple of years, but we have some other problems with taking tentative maps to final maps, and that is, if they're, I like to use the word alive anymore, if their approval is still good. So legislatively, since the Great Recession, they've given us about eleven years, depending on when they were started and when they would expire. So we try to work with applicants as best we can to keep those maps as lo, alive for as long as possible. With the extensions of time, you're looking upwards of thirteen years for some of these maps, and again, staff works with the owners. Most on the list will expire within the next two years if they, they are still barely alive. So staff does remind the owners that they, that these maps will, might not be here two, two years from now. We have done, we are looking at minor revisions to tentative maps to help applicants through the process, and as maps are finalized, Public Works also has the opportunity to extend the life of these maps through just working through the final map process. So what does that process overall look like? From application, we go to project review committee to the counter. That's up to the applicant entirely and how prepared they are to move forward on that process. It could be instantaneous, it could take months, it really just depends, but we try to prompt and help people to get to the counter as fast as possible with the application. The processing of the document is sometimes unwieldy. If we're looking at general plan amendments or E I Rs, we have been successful in getting them done with as few as six months, and that's, that's working pretty hard in getting the technical information from the applicants as quickly as possible. You're looking at zone changes and the equivalent negative declarations and environment documentation, we get done in three to six months. And one tentative map we did in Cutler Rossi, I think, took thirty-seven days for self-help, so we can move very, very fast with categorical exemption. So, we, we are not a, a problem in processing tentative maps or final maps in this county. By the time you agendize it, if it's in an urban development boundary, it could go straight to the planning commission, if not, the Board of Supervisors here it. Those processes, we have not had too many continuations, so they've been moving through fairly quickly at that, that point, to a discretionary approval of the tentative or vesting subdivision map. The final map process, the, when the engineers get their hands on it, they make the application straight to the Public Works Department, hopefully with a actual final map in hand, with all the legals that are required for final maps, they need improvements and/or bonding, if they're unable to build this themselves immediately, or if there are off-site improvements, that might be a little bit more costly. They will need to perfect their will serve letters and/or established assessment districts, what we're talking about today, and then they move, as we are here today, to the board for a ministerial approval, not a discretionary approval. So what are some of our major recent projects? The Ash Project, Anderson Village, now Summerlin Homes, San Joaquin Valley Homes, it was a specific plan and tentative map, that was for forty-seven acres, a hundred and seventy-seven lots, minus three acres, has donated to the city for a school park. Where are they at right now? They've graded the project for Phase One. Improvement plans are nearly completed as we work with the city to get those completed, and we are looking for extraterritorial agreements through L A F G O here very, very shortly, April third, to be exact. The Goshen Village East Self-Help Enterprises, they have a site plan approved for Phase One. They did their extension of time, and also a final parcel map in lieu of vesting, or in lieu of the final tentative map right now, to be able to move forward quickly. Again, we work with all applicants through the process to make it as efficient as possible. That... That project overall is forty-seven acres with eighty-nine single-family units and two hundred multifamily units, so the Phase One is approved for a hundred and twenty-six units on six-point-eight-five acres. Other notable projects, Contell Hollow and Patterson Track by Smee Homes and Travers Self-Helps Enterprises, eleven units. So what are some of the impediments to housing in the county? Mostly it comes down to financing and improvements. The capital costs of improvements required don't equal the value of the houses or the land, so it becomes very difficult to finance against land values, especially when they're very competitive with agricultural values in the county right now. Homebuilders need service connections to justify costs of backbone infrastructure and do not have time to wait for...to build capacity or capacity to become available. Homebuilders not in the business of building infrastructure. That's developers, or if they're fortunate, that's some of the functions these CSDs serve. Many unincorporated communities do not have services available right now, either to moratoriums and/or decisions by some of these CSDs that they do not want to put any of their capacity at risk, and that was very poignant during the drought years. Over the last four years, mostly on staff's part, we've mostly been waiting for consultants, owners, and agents to complete studies in order to force staff to complete processing projects. Only current housing projects being proposed right now that we just heard last week was a ten-lot subdivision in Pixley with five of the houses already existing on the property. Other land being proposed around cities in the UABs still requires services from the city, so even if the city may not want us to try to develop in the county right next to them, we tell them to go to the city first, and the city likes to remind us that they still have to provide services to these projects. So at the end of the day, you have to work through the cities. So the project we're talking about today is between Avenue three-oh-eight and Avenue three-ten, east of Road seventy-two in the community of Goshen. It's an infill project. It's the first phase of three of a final map. We've been working collaboratively with Public Works Planning and the building staff for the last two years to get this project back to the point it's at. This map was first approved back in 2006, so we've been working pretty hard to get it to here. It's seventeen-point-zero-six acres, seventy-six lots. This first phase, the final map before you, is for twenty-five of those lots. As far as the improvements, you can see looking southeast, the site's already been graded, roads have been bladed. Looking southeast corner from northwest corner of the site, you can see the D-eight lift with the drain, sewer, and water pipe, and that's looking southeast from the middle of the site. And it's been rough graded. You can see some of the lots have already been rough graded, and you can see the surrounding housing by Smee Homes under current construction in the background, or should say finishing construction in the background. So as far as the formation of assessment districts, these proceedings are to form assessment districts, numbers eighteen-dash-seven-eight-nine for storm drainage and number eighteen-dash-seven-eight-nine-R for road maintenance. That includes approval of the assessment diagram, approval of the engineer's report, the levy of the assessment, and the ballot and waiver of the public hearing by the owner themselves. And with that complete staff's report, I did want to say one thing about RENA in this county. If you look at the RENA numbers as projected or given to us by TCAG back in 2015, you'll see the county gets a large share. The city of Visalia is ten thousand, but we have seven thousand. Some of the smaller cities have in the low hundreds, so it's a little bit of an unfair calculus to put that burden on the county itself, but if we just add some more services available, I think that would really help us getting close to that...closer to that number.
Well, I would imagine that's in part due to the proportion that the unincorporated communities have as a total to the entire county, which we're about a third, so that would make...we should be comparable as far as the city of Visalia, but realistically, there's not as much development that happens in unincorporated communities as the cities.
And that's correct. There were some legislative proposals last year, and I do use that word "available." If you look at the housing element legislation out there, it does require that you put those available zoned areas in areas that are available, and that includes infrastructure. Well, we do have infrastructure around it, it's just not necessarily available, so that, to me, might change the calculus, but the Department of Finance doesn't take that into accommodation.
I'd like to say thank you, Aaron Bock, for your leadership on this project. In addition to that, I'd like to also thank my colleagues on this dais for their willingness and ability to see communities like Goshen grow to its potential. So thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the Board?
I think that this is a really nice project, is what you like to target, being an infill project right where we need it, so slam dunk.
Thank you.
Very good. Yeah, I appreciate it. This is...let's build, build, build. Any entertaining motion if no members of the public have anything to...
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Shacklin, second by Supervisor Townsend. Cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that was for items fifty-nine, sixty, and sixty-one. Now we'll take up our last untimed item from our Ag Commissioner to discuss a little thing called...
I thought we just gave you a retirement plaque.
Industrial hemp.
Kind of weird.
She wishes. And you grow hemp in Nebraska.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here today to discuss some of the recent changes to federal law regarding industrial hemp, outline some statewide problems that the Ag Commissioners Association is finding with having this new commodity to regulate without any regulations in place so far, and to request direction from the Board regarding potential interim ordinance on the cultivation of industrial hemp for commercial purposes, and also to discuss the term "established agricultural research institutions." In state law, you know, the intent was Fresno State, COS, Cal Poly, UC Davis are all ag research colleges, but there seems to be an end around that established institution that's occurring right now in our state. Definition of industrial hemp in the Food and Ag Code comes directly from the California Health and Safety Code definition as a crop that's limited to the types of plant cannabis sativa L, having no more than three-tenths of one percent tetrahydrocannabinol contained in the dried flower tops, whether they're growing or dried, or in the seeds of the plant, the resin extracted from any part of the plant, and every compound manufactured, salt, derivative, mixture, or preparation of the plant, its seeds or resins that are produced. CBD oil, which is sometimes used, you know, if you did a Google search, hemp oil and CBD oil are used interchangeably, and sometimes it's more of a marketing term in some of the research we've been doing, but that's...the CBD oil can come from industrial hemp, and it's the non-intoxicating oil extracted from everything but the seeds of the industrial hemp. So it's...it's sooner in the harvesting process than if you allowed something to go to seeds and harvest those. Industrial hemp produces higher levels of CBD and lower levels of THC, which is the compound that gets you high if you're smoking or doing whatever with cannabis. Industrial hemp has been legalized for cultivation in the United States from the 2018 Farm Bill, which I think was signed in December, and the products, hemp oil and CBD oil can come from industrial hemp. The cannabis, on the other hand, is just the opposite, has higher levels of THC and lower levels of CBD compound. So the Farm Bill expands the production of industrial hemp by these established ag research institutions and private citizens. It does not...you can't just have some backyard plants of industrial hemp. It's only commercial production that's put forth in law. The USDA Ag Marketing Services is the entity that is tasked with coming up with federal regulations, which are not in place yet, and the federal lobbyists for the Ag Commissioner Association had discussions with one of their administrators and said, you know, "We're just learning about industrial hemp and how to regulate it for safe production, so we're hoping that states will slow down because each state is required to put together their plan to meet federal standards and get it approved by USDA AMS." There are several components to the federal law which each state would need to meet, and they involve keeping a database of information regarding the land on which hemp is produced, meaning states or counties would have to regularly report information. There's gonna be a THC testing procedure, and more importantly, disposal of noncompliant products. Statewide, we're finding that it's really difficult to keep industrial hemp under the point-three percent. And then also enforcement procedures for any violations, prior felony convictions or false statements. Someone, as...prior to registration with the county, has to pass a background check because if you're growing cannabis legally in a county, you can have prior felony convictions, but not if you're growing industrial hemp. I'm not sure why there's a difference in those two products. The 2014 Farm Bill allowed for industrial hemp production, but it conflicted with the Drug Enforcement Agency at the federal level, who considered it a Class One narcotic until quite recently. There's gonna be annual inspections or possible random sampling of hemp producers, maybe an auditing of records, and then submitting information from the state level to the USDA and certification that there's sufficient resources and staffing to carry out the At the state level, SB fourteen-oh-nine was signed by Governor Brown in September of 2018 and became effective January first of this year. It authorizes for commercial production and registration of growers through the county Ag Commissioner's Office and exempts those established ag research institutes from the requirements. You know, their cooperation with us would be voluntary, suggested but voluntary, so that's why the Ag Commissioners are concerned about the end-around that some industry groups are attempting in establishing their own institutes. It established an industrial hemp advisory board, which first started meeting in late June of 2017, and so their goal is to advise the Secretary of the California Department of Food and Agriculture, who has authority over cannabis in our state. So right now, we're sitting as, you know, each Ag Commissioner waiting on regulations at the state and federal level to see what kind of activities would be required of my department, and receiving many, many inquiries since last fall from mostly a younger crowd. I've had three growers just kind of casually inquire about growing industrial hemp. I'm not sure if all of the others are current residents or not, but I've heard that in another county to the west of us that there's industry representatives who are asking for a buy-in of, let's say, twenty-five thousand for a grower to work under the umbrella of an agricultural institute in order to grow industrial hemp. And we've had a few programs lately, and you've heard the same kind of thing from the DA, that the Ag Commissioner has gone, you know, as part of their state platform, there's these state laws that come down without regard to how the local departments are gonna recover costs or providing the necessary resources to have this new regulatory activity in our counties. And certainly, training would be something we desperately need, but I'm not so sure at the state level that they would be prepared at CDFA to be the subject matter experts. So I came up with some yield and production values, but keep in mind that since...prior to January first, legitimate ag research universities were not doing research on industrial hemp because they feared that their federal funding would be in jeopardy, and there was, you know, stigma attached to doing work on something that's a controlled substance. But...so in...I queried several Ag Commissioners who had some idea, some things that they heard from industry representatives, and so this is information that comes from other states, and Colorado and Kentucky in particular. A plant can produce one pound of CBD oil. You can generate about twenty-five-hundred plants per acre. The yield per acre, you know, of course, is twenty-five-hundred pounds, somewhere between twenty-four and thirty dollars per pound for CBD oil. Possible gross production value of sixty-two, seventy-five thousand dollars per acre, which is significant. Two hundred dollars per pound of hemp flowers where CBD oil would be coming from. Ten dollars per pound for seed harvested. Eight thousand pounds of hemp seed per acre, and forty-five dollars per gallon for hemp seed oil. Two hundred dollars per pound of...or per ton of baled biomass, which you can use for...you can buy it online for CBD oil production. So I'm here today to ask for consideration of a temporary moratorium to prohibit industrial hemp production until such time where we can look at the state regulations and see what the federal program is going to look like. And we'd have heard that at the state level, the secretary and her staff are looking to tighten up on the definition of ag research institution to be accredited. Unfortunately, that landed... Unfortunately, that language was left out of the law. So what I would like to leave you with is that there were industrial hemp training sessions at the World Ag Expo, two per day, for all three days. And several of our staff went to them and our counsel attorney. And some of the information that we came back with was, and these are from out-of-state growers, that cannabis is easier to grow than industrial hemp. And if you're going to start out with something, it's easier to start out with cannabis production, which is not currently allowed in unincorporated areas. Industrial hemp is not easy to maintain consistently low THC levels on. And the suggestion is, from growers, is to monitor through testing as you're getting closer and closer to harvest, so you know when to ask the local entity to do the official sampling that would say whether or not their crop was going to be destroyed or it could go to market. And so, and just in saying that, you know, we're relying on an industrial hemp grower to tell us when they're going to harvest, based on the kind of products they're going to get from that industrial hemp. And every single plant has different genetics, even though there's going to be a list of about 200 cultivars that are on an approved list, but we haven't, we don't have an approved list yet. And it's very susceptible to cross pollination with cannabis. And I've heard anywhere from 20 to 30 miles, and you go on the internet and they'll tell you with, that the pollen shedding will go up to 100 miles. So counties like Yolo have commercial cannabis production, so they developed interim moratorium to figure out how they're going to isolate the industrial hemp, if allowed to be grown in their county, because it would negatively affect their cannabis industry. So I'm, would answer any questions that I think I could answer. And I know the, this has been on the agenda of the Ag Policy Advisory Committee the last couple of months, and, you know, we're just waiting to hear more about your thoughts.
Questions, comments from the board?
Just Supervisor Valero touched on it briefly earlier, and I don't know if you specifically want to verbalize the findings from the Advisory Committee to this Board of Supervisors, because I want to make sure that their vetting process is being heard by us as well.
Well, I think we, do we have anyone from the Ag Policy Advisory Committee that'd like to speak on that point directly? Mr. Solins?
Are you chair?
And we do have support from the Ag Policy Advisory Committee, formalized in a letter to the-
I saw the paper, but I wanted to give them the-
Mr. Solins now serves as our chair for APAC.
Yes, Jim Solins, Chair of Ag Policy Advisory. And thank you, Marilyn. She prepared a very thorough white paper and gave the Policy Advisory Committee an opportunity to review it. It was discussed, and we are supporting, we support unanimously the decision by the Ag Commissioner for her request to the board.
For an interim moratorium.
Interim moratorium.
Helpful, Jim.
Excuse me?
That's helpful information. And you, I see you haven't gone far in your retirement, but Marilyn's retiring, she's going to Nebraska, so.
You know, I visited Nebraska, it was pretty cold there.
Yeah, it's good to see you here, so.
And there's not as many pheasants as there used to be, so hopefully she'll start a pheasant farm and I'll come visit.
Yeah.
We also have a letter of support for the interim moratorium from the Tulare County Farm Bureau.
I have a question. I don't know, Jim, I know you have a whole committee, so you, you know, we keep saying interim, is this truly an interim? I mean, once, you know, I think it's important to have the regulations and guidelines, et cetera, but are we, are we looking to make this a permanent interim?
Well, I would think that would, that direction would come from us, as far as what we, what we need, based on the information that's provided to me, and I can't say that this is, this is something that's, that I've been very familiar with. I just don't have a whole lot of information. So my recommendation is that our Ag Policy Advisory Committee looks into it a little deeper, you know, have a, have a interim moratorium so that we can control it, but then figure out whether or not we want a permanent moratorium, or if there is some value, if there's growers that have an interest. And I just don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, exactly. Because I'm not looking-
I don't know what the hangups are.
I'm not looking, you know, by approving a moratorium, an interim moratorium, to block this from ever happening. I think you, you set out some good comparisons between hemp and marijuana, so.
The trick is determining which one you have growing in the field, that, because they look alike.
But there is a way, I mean, to do that, if an inspector goes out or just light it up, I guess, and see how you feel afterwards, but.
There was one slip of one of the trainers at the World Ag Expo when he was giving the talk, he mentioned about, well, depending on whether you or not you wanted to smoke it. Well, it's supposed to be low in THC levels, so why would you smoke it?
Well, but smoking it may give you a, you know, a medicinal effect without the high. Anyway, I, I think, you know, I'm fine with, with the interim moratorium, again, until we get more from the state as far as regulating, I think it's very important to regulate it as far as use of, you know, pesticides and all that, if, if it's used with it, since it's going to be consumed by folks. You know, we, we talk about with the legalization of marijuana in California, we do have that moratorium here, because it is not, you know, a federal, supported federally, but now this is. So I think that's, that's a big difference to me also, so. But I'm, I'm supportive of this coming before us now and waiting and seeing how things play out.
Some of the discussion we had, it's important that our growers are also protected.
Right.
You know, we've had similar situation where the regulatory environment changes quicker than, than our, than the educational process for the growers. And that can result in, you know, financial risk and possibly even legal risks beyond, beyond their ability to anticipate. There's a recent story about, you know, it's legal in Kentucky, but trying to get a semi-load from Kentucky to Colorado to process for oil, the semi-load in Oklahoma was confiscated. The drivers are jailed until all the testing can be done. You know, we could have the same situation in California as we try to transport it. I mean, once you grow it and harvest it, then you have to transport it. So all of these regulatory considerations need to be developed from a grower's perspective before they can actually feel confident that they can be a legal grower.
And I know the post office and the CH, well, the Highway Patrol in various states are having fits, trying to determine the difference. With industrial hemp interstate movement is possible. And I know the, in the industrial hemp podcasts that you can look at on CDFAs website, they're adamantly opposed to the Ag Commissioners being involved, the industry groups are, because it annoys them that they don't, can't just pay one state fee and that's it. They argued a lot for the last year and a half over the cost of this program. And that $900 that we would collect goes back to CDFAs for the administration of their program. That does not include the cost of each county recovering costs. Some of those costs can't be recovered, like pest exclusion, pest detections, that sort of mandated function. But they don't like that each county is going to have a variation in hourly rates or costs of doing business.
Well, I guess it's a rude awakening. That's welcome to agriculture. If they want to grow it, then they-
That's right.
-got to do what everybody else has to do.
Has the sheriff weighed, has the sheriff weighed in on this at all? Is there any input from, from them?
Not that I'm aware of.
Other comments?
I, I mean, I agree with the, the comments and feedback that's been given by the board. I, you know, this is going to be something that's going to keep knocking at our door, being the, you know, consistently the top three ag county in this country. And, you know, seeing these gross valuations, I mean, it's only a matter of time before it's going to start coming to this valley and really being pushed. So once there are consistent regulations in place, you know, I think it's definitely an idea that we're going to have to very seriously consider and tackle and make sure we're prepared to do what's necessary to keep our community safe as well.
So a few things that I would like, I think it sounds like a majority is interested in moving forward with an interim or temporary, whatever the terminology is, moratorium, similar to what we did for cannabis, to move forward with that direction. But I think also, and I know I had sent some information to the Ag Policy Advisory Committee to do a deeper dive. I know there was a, there was a, you know, a policy as far as our recommendation in regards to today's item, but a deeper dive as far as what, what would, what would it look like if we did move forward with it? You know, what are setback requirements? I know I, I'm curious as far as water usage, when we look at, when we look at the, the gross dollars per acre, granted, these are rough in estimates, but, you know, I'm looking at the, the plight of white area growers, and is this a possibility that may actually help them continue to farm? They still have to follow acreage, perhaps, because of setback requirements, but it allows them to still generate revenue on a piece of property that, that historically, or they, you know, with stigma, they may not be able to moving forward. So I think those things need to be looked at, the, as well as, you know, how do you identify? I think that's a real issue that I'm glad you brought up and you put into the item, because, again, not being familiar, I, I don't know whether or not, you know, I would have known that. At, at the last RCRC Executive Committee, we did discuss briefly, and so I'd recommend either Deanne or Marilyn to reach out to Paul Smith and Arthur Wileen. And I know Deanne has some past history with Arthur, that, because they, they're working on language with the state in regards to this. And so I think they already have it written, and to see that language and at the, you may have some input as far as some recommendations, as far as to, to change that. There's some changes that need to be made before they're pushed at the, at the state level. But then to see whether or not there's some other things. Because I know there was a, there was another question in regards to whether or not the, the Farm Bill allowed for production of, of the CBD oil, because that's under FDA's, it's considered a pharmaceutical. And so there's some hiccups, I guess, whether or not that's, that's currently allowed. And so I, I think that just goes to the point that there's a lot of question marks, and there's a lot of, there's various agencies that aren't sure what, how to regulate, who's in charge, what the rules are. So all, all those things, I'd be curious, you know, before we take a, a permanent stance, you know, it may, it may be a good idea, but just unrealistic to actually manage to, to move forward.
I just wanted to add, along those lines, if we do move forward, it looks like we're going to with the, the temporary moratorium, would that also include processing of the CBDs? In other words, you could, instead of, there could be a request, I think there have been some, has been some talk about people trying to put together some sort of a plant that would process and distribute the oils, packaging, that type of thing. Is that a part of this?
I don't know, but I think we could, we could have that as a discussion point as, for the Ag Policy Advisory Committee.
You made a good point about that, about the transport.
Right.
There was an entity who was considering Woodlake as a destination for a processing facility.
I think the, I think he's already opened a over 3,000 square foot facility there, he's already equipping, that's supposed to be processing oils.
Then they incorporated. Yeah, I think there was a, there was Lafco Incorporated, old packing house, and, and went through that process for the purpose of being able to, it was unincorporated, but now it's incorporated.
That is one of the unknowns. If you have growers putting in 200 acres, where they're going to get their product processed in a timely manner? Is it going to have to go to Colorado? You know, they could be in a world of hurts if they don't have a home for it.
So I echo the sentiments of my colleagues on this dais, and with that, I'd like to make a motion, if there are any-
I don't think we need, we just have general directions.
General directions, oh, okay.
Yeah, I think it's pretty clear, everyone's on the same-
Public, any other public comment?
Yeah, any public comment, anyone else from public that's interested in providing feedback? I think you have the direction clear. APAC, if you could get, provide some additional information, Mr. Solins, and have, you know, I, we, I don't think I, I envision, or the board envisions that, that, that that'll happen overnight, you know? It may take a while to, to get all the information, but then from the Ag Commissioner's Office, if we could, we can move forward with scheduling and getting a, getting the temporary interim moratorium. Very good.
Do you need that information prior to your decision on the moratorium, or whether it's be something-
Yes, but, but I think the temporary moratorium, what, the maximum period is 22 months, is that correct?
Months to start off with.
45 days to start, maybe, or then, can we continue? 45 days to start out with, and it can be continued.
45 days, but the maximum I was thinking was 22 months. So I don't think there's a huge urgency, so if it's, you know, I think, I would envision that the state and the feds are still going to be working this out for several months, and you won't have all the data and information until those are complete.
Well, the harvest, or the planting season is coming up, depending on weather.
So I get, let's separate the two things, right? So that, there's urgency for the interim moratorium, there's not urgency from APAC to provide a recommendation?
Ideally, yes, because of, there are industry groups at the state level are pushing because the regulations have come so slow.
Correct.
So I know that there's a registration packet that was sent to the Office of Administrative Law, but that doesn't cover the regulations to grow or sampling or testing, anything like that. So, which will come in separate packages in increments.
I, one last request. I, I would be curious to see how many growers are actually interested, so maybe some outreach meetings or some type of outreach to Farm Bureau and other, you know, because this could be a nothing burger. If no one's really interested in growing locally, then, you know, why put in a whole lot of effort?
I was surprised, but there, there were a number of growers, and at least one major grower, that I know, talked to myself and talked to Marilyn, that was considering planning a trial, have a trial planning.
Had ordered the seed already.
Yeah, already ordered the seed. We got seed companies out there pushing it. So it would be, it would be in the best interest of our growers that they knew that, at this point, you know, we're, they're considering a moratorium before someone gets something in the ground that they have to just disc back up. Because Marilyn's right, we're looking at planting season, you know, just in this coming month.
Very good. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we will, or counsel, do we have any need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Items A and C are off calendar. Items B through H will be heard in closed session. I do expect one announcement out, and if there is no further public comment, we can adjourn into closed session, reconvening at 1:30 for the study session.
Very good. So we will adjourn to closed session, and we'll be back at 1:30-
I'll be back.
...for the remaining item. Thank you. remaining item. Thank you.
This is Deputy County Counsel Matt Wang reporting out on item B. The Board of Supervisors has authorized defense of John Hess, Reed, Schenke, Hernan, Beltran, and Gray Tompkins with a reservation of rights in the case JT2 Incorporated versus County of Tulare, a public entity. The adverse party is JT2 Incorporated, doing business as Todd Companies, and this case involves contractual disputes. On motion from Supervisor Shuklian, seconded by Supervisor Valero, the vote was five, nothing in favor of defending the county employees. This concludes the reporting out for today.
Ah, it hasn't turned to 1:31 yet. All right, we're back in session for our 1:30 study session. And I appreciate the staff that are present. This is something we don't think the board has utilized in a while, but the concept is to, the idea of the study session is to flesh out things and have an open dialogue with the board and hopefully be a little more informal, but to really flesh out larger concepts and things that need additional feedback for staff before we formalize it and take it for an actual action for it. So, with that, we've got our first topic is a report for our very own. That's perfect. Paul Yoder, the straw sipper, plastic straw. That doesn't look like his paper.
Big gulp?
Yeah, big gulp.
He just said it's a less formal thing.
That's right. That's all good, so.
Thank you.
And Paul Yoder is our state lobbyist and just give us a general update on what's going on in Sack of Tomatoes.
Very good. Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, board members, staff, and members of the public. So, to look forward in 2019, you sort of have to look back at least a little bit, going to the November election. The so-called blue wave, it happened with respect to legislative races here in California as well. The state senate now has 29 Democrats. The state assembly actually has 61. The 61st Democrat is the result of a recent change of registration from a member who did get elected in November as a Republican, Mr. Brian Mainshine in San Diego. So, it's now at 61. But, so, there's 29 out of 40 in the state senate and 61 now out of 80 in the California Assembly. And so, people are trying to coin phrases instead of a supermajority, a super-duper majority, a mega-majority. It's quite an astounding turn of events since November, just in terms of the composition of the legislature. So, that's the legislature. Obviously, we got a new governor, but really, when I said looking back to look forward, I was thinking mainly of the propositions that were on the ballot. The fact that the repeal of SB1 failed was very, very significant. The fact that the voters also approved the No Place Like Home initiative as well as the housing bond was also very significant developments. And we'll talk about the housing bond when I get to the budget released recently by Governor Newsom. So, those are things that happened prior to January 10th and prior to the release of Governor Newsom's first budget. Sort of sets the table a little bit, if you will. So, on January 10th, Governor Gavin Newsom released, again, his first state budget for the state of California. He called it a "California for All" state budget. And in stark contrast to Governor Brown, he only had about half a dozen slides in his PowerPoint. And I am going to reference them here. This first pie chart, Governor Newsom proposed 86.4% of the estimated surplus of $13 billion for one-time spending, and I'll break that down for you here momentarily, and 13.6% for ongoing expenditures. So, it's important to understand, at least in the governor's mind, with all this extra money rattling around, what he would tell you is that overwhelmingly, the majority of what he's proposing in his first budget is towards one-time, not ongoing expenses. He wants to build a rainy day fund, and he's shooting for $19.4 billion in 2223. He cited that the next recession will probably see a deficit of at least $25 billion. Thus, the need for a $19 or $20 billion reserve. And then, this breaks down the $13.6 billion in the surplus, 4.8 billion in increasing reserves, 4 billion in eliminating debts and deferrals, and 4.8 billion paying down unfunded retirement liabilities. For the unfunded pension liabilities, the governor's proposing to spend $3 billion for PERS and $1 billion for STIRS. He estimates that those investments over time actually save two, two and a half, three times the amount of money that he would be putting into those funds in the fiscal year. I mentioned increasing reserves, and I just talked about paying down unfunded retirement liabilities, but in terms of eliminating debts and deferrals, once upon a time when we had a really, really serious recession here in California, we went, we shifted from accrual to cash. And Governor Newsom is proposing to reverse that and go backwards. And so, we're sort of paying ourselves back. Likewise, for any kind of special funds that were borrowed from during the last recession, Governor Newsom is proposing to basically repay those once and for all. I think I said Governor Brown there a minute ago. I meant Governor Newsom. This is his savings over time in those PERS and STIRS payments, and this is the funding level for schools. So, those were the issues that Governor Newsom chose to highlight. Now, having said that, almost literally the minute Governor Newsom released this draft budget, the revenues for January came in, the revenue estimates for January, and they were down by several billion dollars. And that was on top of the revenue estimates for December being down a couple billion dollars. And so, there's been a lot of hand-wringing in Sacramento about what does that mean and is the surplus, is it really going to materialize in the first place? And assuming it materializes, will it be as big as Governor Newsom is saying it is? The one thing I think the controller, the Department of Finance, the legislative analysts would all tell you today is that we still haven't really figured out fiscally for the state of California, what are all the impacts and the results from the 2017 federal tax reform. Pretty clear that taxpayers are altering their behavior, and all I can tell you is that when April rolls around, folks are just hoping that it's all sorted itself out and that the money they thought that would really materialize has in fact materialized. So, that's fiscally what the governor proposed. Policy-wise, some pretty big stuff. I think everybody knows on high-speed rail, there's a change. In terms of the twin tunnels proposal, there's a change. On water more broadly, Governor Newsom has made it very clear that he wants to take a different, he wants to chart a different course than Governor Brown did. And I do think for everything that's in Governor Newsom's proposed budget, there are some big policy things that we're still awaiting, and water would really be first and foremost on the top of that list. I think you give it about another two or three months, and you'll see the Newsom administration not just talk about one tunnel rather than two tunnels and not just mention the water fee, the statewide water fee, but I think you're going to see a more comprehensive package proposed by Governor Newsom for the state of California. And so, as much as we have what he wants to do or what he's proposing to do, there are still some pretty big things that we're still waiting to hear on. So, pause there, take a little bit of breath. So, that's Governor Newsom so far. And then, last Friday rolled around, and last Friday, I think as everybody knows, was the deadline to introduce new legislation in California. Just under 2,600 new bills were introduced by last Friday. Spent pretty much the whole weekend.
Good year.
What's that?
Good year, not too many.
You know, we lovingly refer to the state capitol as the idea factory, right? So, 2,600 new ideas. A lot of the 2,600 are what we would call spot bills. That's because their content is spotty. There's really almost nothing in them, and that's, you would read the bill and it would say, "It is the intent of the legislature to do XYZ." Members who introduce spot bills, well, any bill that's in print already has to wait 30 days to be amended, and that includes spot bills. And I want to make sure everybody understands that because you have all these spot bills and you have to wait 30 days really for the next dump of substantive language, if you will. And so, that's going to be something to mark on your calendars for March 22nd, being that deadline, of course. So, 2,600 bills to track now. We've already provided staff with a Tulare County-specific bill matrix. These are issues that we think might respond to your draft legislative platform or issues that historically the county has cared about. I didn't bring copies of it. I was going to, but it's like this high. We break all the new bills down into issue areas, aging, you name it, across the board. And it's probably 60 different lists. Your staff have those. It's easier to parcel out to your county departments to have them review new legislation, give feedback to you in the CAO's office, and instruct what we do in Sacramento. So, that's legislation. So, I want to talk about, we really are going to enter into the, sort of the crazier part of the legislative calendar. Bills have to be imprinted, as I said, 30 days before they can be amended, but that's not going to prevent committees from scheduling those bills for hearing. Likewise, state budget subcommittees are already on the calendar docketing the various issues that they need to break down that are in Governor Newsom's proposed state budget. Do these hearings happen at different times of the year? No. So, you have almost like two calendars, a budget subcommittee calendar and a policy committee calendar. And because counties care about so much stuff, because you care about so much stuff, we have to be at almost all those hearings. And I want to say, I just want to remind the board, it's not just me at Shaw Yoder Antuit, there's eight more registered lobbyists, and there are four other legislative aides. We try to be everywhere we can. We actually send notes on every relevant hearing that we can, almost verbatim notes to the CAO, and he can farm those out as need be. But it does get crazier, and it's going to, we are at that time right now. More important deadlines looking ahead, April 26th, which as fate would have it, is right after the annual CSAC Spring Conference. That's the deadline. I mentioned policy committees that are going to hear these 2,600 bills. That's the deadline, the first deadline by which they have to get out of their first policy committee. And that's actually the first time where we start to narrow down the list of the 2,600 bills because a lot of those bills won't get out of their first policy committee hearing. And they'll be two-year bills and they'll roll over to next year. Another important deadline, obviously, is May 10th. That's the deadline by which Governor Newsom must release his May revise. I don't want to tell you the ink is dry on the state budget on May 10th, but governors do typically get 90 to 95% of what they propose. And to the extent that counties, Tulare County, CSAC, anybody else, RCRC wants to change what is in the Jan. 10 budget, if you haven't changed it by May 10th, the odds get increasingly slim after that. And so, that's a very, very, very important date. Lastly, and then I'm happy to take any questions, I really just wanted to set the table again for 2019. Outreach and advocacy, your trips, partnering with you, you being in Sacramento, I'm sure it's true in DC as well, it matters. It absolutely matters when you put yourselves in front of policymakers, unless you, supervisor, you put yourself in front of policymakers in Sacramento. They just frankly pay more attention. They hear you better. And I appreciate how active this board has been historically coming to Sacramento and partnering with our firm on things for the benefit of Tulare County. And then, last but not least, I want to make sure folks are aware that, this goes back to Governor Newsom, and, you know, not all governors are the same, and even when they're from the same party. And so, there have been meetings that we have witnessed occurring with the Newsom administration, and this is not a slight to the Brown administration, but they're just meetings that wouldn't have occurred in the last eight years. And so, noticing that and talking to some of the governor's staff, we inquired about, and understanding he's been to the Valley several times and understanding he's reaching out to some of the mayors in the biggest cities in the Valley, we said, "Hey, what about counties? What about county supervisors? If we could get all eight counties in some form or fashion to come in and talk to Governor Newsom, is that something that Governor Newsom would be interested in?" And I'm happy to say that the answer, the tentative answer is yes, right, until, you know, God only knows what will happen in the intervening time. Everybody be on their Ps and Qs, right? But, why did I look at you when I said that?
I know, I was going to say, why'd you look at him?
That was, that was, that was, well, anyway. All right, I'll look over here now. Just tease it.
For the audio record, he was looking at Pete Vanderpoel.
But, you know, assuming status quo over the next couple of weeks, I think there's an interest on behalf of the governor to meet with all eight counties, to understand common themes, ways in which potentially to lift up the Valley together. And I don't know what's going to come from that effort. I'd be lying if I said I did, but I know that, you know, again, elected folks coming to Sacramento, partnering with us, being willing to take the meetings and engage eyeball to eyeball, I think something good will come of it, and I'm looking forward to that. And so, we're just working on your behalf in every way we can possibly think of. Thanks for letting me participate in this today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Supervisor Vanderpoel?
A couple of questions slash comments. First of all, thank you, Paul, for the presentation, and thank you for, I'm now in my 11th year of the county being represented by your firm in Sacramento. You've done a great job, and you continue to do a great job being a voice for Tulare County, Valley Counties, and just counties in general. So, that is very much appreciated. I look forward to seeing how my life is going to improve in the state of California with 2,600 new ways of improving life here. It's hard to imagine there's that many things that can be addressed, but it's amazing. The legislature always finds a way, right? That being said, with the new governor in place, I think there's a lot of opportunities there for some specific asks that we have as a county. And you made comments about the effort on behalf of the eight Valley Counties in meeting with the governor himself. Some of the specific, I know Supervisor Crocker participated in the call, you know, I really would like to have that conversation obviously centered around water. Water's going to be a very top priority. I think the Williamson Act is another very consistent theme and priority that we Valley Counties have, and I think it could be viewed as a real conservation tool, option for maintaining open space, et cetera. You know, there's a lot of ways we can go about that. I think we need to also talk about the IHSS proposal because I think he's very open to that, and he's come out with some significant improvements already over what the Brown administration had already implemented. And another subject that was brought up earlier today that I think is something that we can all get behind is the concept of unfunded mandates. I think we are finding, whether it's marijuana, whether it's, you know, various different subject areas, the district attorney's office because of restructuring of the courts. There are a lot of mandates being passed down to counties that don't come with funding attached to them. And I think that that's important, that we continue to ring that bell. I know that one of our former board members, Supervisor Worthley, used to serve on the commission on state mandates, and then the commission was dissolved. And so, you know, whatever we can do to make sure that as these mandates are passed down, there are dollars attached to them, is in our interest because we are most concerned about delivering services here in the county, and it's difficult to do so when we're passed down with mandates without funding with them. So, just a few thoughts for you.
I would, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that if there are technically unfunded mandates, then we don't have to implement them. So, I guess specifically, it's underfunded mandates, right? So, if you, if they throw in a thousand bucks for Williamson Act, it's still there. It's not unfunded, but it's severely underfunded.
The chairman is technically correct. And I won't speak for Tulare. You can speak for yourselves, obviously, but I know that in other parts of the state, being authorized to not do something, but then having a lot of folks locally who still want the thing done, that's been a betwixt and between kind of situation for, I know for a lot of boards and counties. And so, but, but that is, that is technically correct.
But we still want the money. We will still want the money. That's the main point.
And there are still a host, I mean, both these supervisors are correct, which is lucky for me, right, answering this question. But there are a lot of mandates that are in fact underfunded. There are, and there are still some for which, we actually got repaid last year for, and the CAO can correct me here, but for, as far as I know, the biggest outstanding item for which counties were owed. And that's, the shorthand for it is the AB 3632 mandate. It was for services that counties provided, specialty mental health services that counties provided to kids for about 20 years. Kids who were identified through the school systems, counties treated them. The costs were enormous statewide, and there was quite a bill owed to the counties on that. And we actually got that repaid last year by Governor Brown. I don't recall exactly how much to. I don't recall exactly how much Tulare received, but it's one-time money and a one-time repayment for you. But there are still some old unpaid mandates that are on that list that we still need to try to get repaid on.
Any other comments or questions from the board or members of the public?
Ask, Paul, can you briefly, I don't want to put you on the spot, but could you just, since IHSS is a big topic and it's been on our radar for a long time, can you just kind of briefly talk about what the governor's proposed changes did, just so that we kind of make sure we understand that clearly?
As a point of order, I think Supervisor Chucklean wants to speak.
Yeah, if we're going to be talking about IHSS, I am a provider for a family, so I will be recusing myself during the discussion.
Oh, all right. So, yes, Mr. CAO, so, so the last deal in Sacramento for in-home supportive services happened a couple of years ago. And counties, CSAC always knew that it was the budget year plus two or the third year of implementation where the cost to the counties were really going to rocket upwards. And so, there's been a lot of work, and I have to tip my hat to CSAC on this, a lot of work by them to try to get this new administration to provide some relief. And that is in fact what Governor Newsom is providing. Out of the general fund, two-hundred-and-forty, I'm going to round up, two-hundred-and-forty-two million in increased expenditure by the state of California to essentially cover what would otherwise be the county MOE or a portion of it, is being proposed in the budget by Governor Newsom. And then, that amount would increase in budget year 2021 and thereafter. It's general fund money, I will say, and I don't have any problem saying this into a live mic, I think counties, I mean, Governor Newsom talked, just like Governor Brown did, about the potential imminent recession. This is general fund money. It's hundreds of millions of dollars out of the state's general fund. And to paraphrase, I mean, the state government giveth and the state government can taketh away. And so, I think that's a caution for every county, including Tulare. But right now, a couple hundred million dollars to defray what would otherwise be county costs, I think that's a significant achievement. And CSAC has already actually not only congratulated Governor Newsom, but has officially gone on record in supporting the proposal.
Is there a long-term solution or this is just good for the upcoming fiscal? I mean, is there work, I guess?
I think more work is going to be, we've been having some conversations about what next, potentially. I think if you look at the aging of California, I think if you look at folks in the legislature and the governor, to at least to a significant degree, wanting to expand healthcare in California for IHSS or for something new and different, to happen to IHSS to not be part of, you know, those mixes or those contexts, I think, I don't think we should kid ourselves. I think IHSS is gonna, it's, it could morph again. I mean, it's morphed multiple times over the last fifteen-plus years and I think we're going to see it morph pretty significantly, at least one more time in a Gavin Newsom administration. I just can't tell you exactly how, Mr. Chairman, not right now.
I'm going to take things a little bit out of order since Supervisor Chucklean's taken or left the room. So, Julieta, if there's anything specifically on the state platform regarding IHSS that any of the board or members of the public want to pipe in, we'll deal with that subject first and just deal with that. And then, we'll call Supervisor Chucklean back in and we'll go through everything else after that.
Good afternoon, Julieta Martinez, Chief of Staff to the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. And yes, so, we can go ahead and move into the study session portion that will focus on the state platform. And after we review that, we can go on to the federal platform. But since Supervisor Amy Chucklean has already recused herself, if we can go ahead and jump over to number nineteen, if you do have any questions regarding this item, we have already made some corrections. You were provided this draft last week and an update. We are basically following what our state is trying to do. We've been in communication with our HJSA Director in regards to this item. I know there were some questions about some formulas with IHSS going forward that our departments don't feel would really affect us in the near future. Paul gave a very nice update of what's going on in the state. And I think in general, some of our concerns have been, we're not sure what the number's going to look like for this county yet going forward. There's a lot of push from the state for us to give our support for this new MOE that they're proposing, but we're hoping to get more details before we actually take a formal position. So, if you have any questions, comments or concerns on this item, let me know.
For the two new guys in your new Supes Institute training, did they cover the IHSS MOE at all? And if they didn't, then I'd like a little bit of background as far as why this is important to us and why this is something that we're discussing.
We did hear about it a little bit, but it was combined with a whole lot of other stuff. So, if we want to do a little more, I don't know, Supervisor Valero?
I would concur.
So, briefly, I guess we, the state took it over from when the county, and when they took it over, took over the program, they also instituted minimum wage increases and then they forced it back on us. And so, now we have to, we get it along with the additional wage costs without additional secured funding, in a nutshell.
That's a great nutshell, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would just, and for the public's benefit too, I think the rough estimate statewide of the total IHSS costs currently is $2 billion plus. So, we're not talking about one of the smaller programs in California state government. We're talking about one of the bigger ones.
And it's also an entitlement. So, if anyone qualifies, we have to provide the service. There's no discretion as far as the entitlement. So, that's another challenge. We don't have flexibility as far as how much we can spend.
Years ago, the state set a maintenance effort that was fairly consistent with the spending at that time. And Tim and Lutz and Paul can help me out here. But I think what happened was, as the population aged and the costs ballooned in the program, the governor quickly realized that, hey, kind of fixing the county's costs in this program probably wasn't the smartest idea from the state's perspective. So, they unwound the MOE because the state lost revenue from the, was it the MCO tax? From the managed care organization tax? So, they were kind of supplementing this program through an MCO tax that came via a waiver from CMS, right?
Yes, that's right. And may I?
Yes, go ahead.
That tax is actually set to sunset. The Newsom administration is proposing to extend it, but for whatever reason in the legislature that runs into problems, then you start to have to unwind things a little bit. Just literally before we came up here today, got in our email a letter from one of the statewide organizations weighing in on the governor's proposed IHSS deal and saying, you know, that they'll take a position one way or the other if certain things that they want included are included. And so, I know CSAC, Julieta referenced, you know, I think I did too, CSAC would like support from counties individually on this. But almost the minute they asked for that, some pretty interesting things started happening. And so, counties might want to respectfully, I would say respectfully to CSAC, maybe keep our powder dry for a little bit here, but happy to answer other questions about IHSS. We're going on about twenty years of history now and it really, Chairman did a great job of talking about how it's gone back and forth.
Is there, back to the platform, is there any additions or anything we want to look at or?
I was just going to compliment staff for putting this together. I think it was very, from looking at the extensiveness of the issues, we really reached out to the various departments in the county and tried to take in everyone's feedback and making sure we brought forward a comprehensive list of items that we should be advocating upon as we go down the halls in Sacramento. And I think that different legislators may have different influences and certain subject matters that are contained within these documents are going to be more applicable and we can get more assistance depending upon who we're speaking with. So, I'm pretty supportive of this being as comprehensive rather than just picking, you know, two key issues and then focusing on those and then, you know, leaving other opportunities aside when we could really address any of them through an adopted platform that's this comprehensive.
So, for IHSS, so, we're good because I'm going to call Supervisor Chucklean back and then we'll finish up the rest of the-
Mr. Chairman, when I said keep your powder dry, I didn't mean on the, just to clarify, on the platform item, I meant on a letter of support.
Right.
Okay. I figured everybody got that, but I wanted to be clear.
Very, very good. Any other comments, members of the public? Nope? Yeah, if you want to grab Supervisor Chucklean, that'd be great. Did you want to talk about, I guess, any, we did, I don't know if you were finished, Paul, as far as your presentation or if you wanted to add any other things? Feel free to add additional stuff, otherwise we can, you guys can do the tandem, you know, the Julieta and Paul Show or Paul and Julieta, I don't know who's got first digs.
I think I get to share the stage with Denise.
And as soon as Supervisor Chucklean joins us, we'll continue with the rest.
I just before, while we're waiting for the supervisor, board members who were here last year might have noticed that the platform's a little bit shorter and it's shorter because we got some stuff done.
Right.
I'm pretty proud of that.
It's good.
Wish you all be proud of that, so.
Very good. All right. Take it away.
Thank you. And thank you for joining us again Supervisor Chucklean. So, I have asked for those of you listening at home attentively to this study session, Denise England, Water Program Resources Director, to join us along with Mr. Paul Yoder so that we can do an overview of this state and federal legislative platform. And just to kind of go over, the idea of this study session is, in front of you is the state legislative platform, which we will go over. You received a draft with annotated changes and suggestions by staff. But the true purpose of this study session is really to get your input and guidance on the draft before you. If you like the style of the platform, if there's any subject matter that is not in this document, that you just feel staff, I think it needs to be added back in there. If there's anything in this platform you really think, hey, Paul just said we accomplished a lot, some of these might be included and they need to be taken out. And then, towards the end, try to get closer to finalizing priorities. But like I said, today is about input and guidance because this is still going to be a working document. And with your direction today, we will come back before this Board of Supervisors in March to take a formal vote on a final platform. And so, we will turn to the state legislative platform. Our intent was really to turn to our chairman and the board as you went through this document to answer any specific questions you had or any additions that you had to this document. So, I will turn back to our chairman and let him guide.
Thank you. And just, I guess, for Supervisor Valero and Townsend's sake, the platform is utilized to give, as Supervisor Vanderpoel talked about, it's a broad overview. And so, it's not, there are some specific asks, but generally, it's kind of a guideline for Paul to utilize and his team in Sacramento when, as the twenty-six-hundred bills come through, what is Tulare County's position? What's the Board of Supervisors' position on that? And I think that's important where it gives them flexibility for him and his team to see whether or not there are items of interest. On the flip side, we find that there are items that are specific interest to each of us. And so, at any given time, we can weigh in on specific letters of support or opposition. And we've done that in a regular board agenda items. And so, there's, you know, there's things that come up, whether legislators ask us for that or we hear it with the various associations that we're involved with. And so, that, you know, there's multiple ways as far as how we can take a specific position on any given piece of legislation. But this is, this generally is a broader subject where it's kind of giving direction as far as how we want Paul to lobby on our behalf and his team.
One more thing, if I may chime in to consider when you're reviewing this document, is when the board makes a selection of what they want to prioritize or what they want in this platform, this allows staff or individual supervisors who get requests for letters of support from our representatives at the state level to move forward with them. So, for example, IHHS, when CSAC reaches out or RCRC, whoever it may be, needing some support from us, if it is already in our platform, already approved by the board for this year, we can make that connection to the letter and meet strict deadlines. And even though it is not in the platform, when somebody requests, that is when we bring it back for formal action as its own item to the board. So, just also think about this, if you're passionate about an item that's in this document, it makes it easier for staff and Paul to produce those support levels and letters and meet those deadlines at a faster pace than usual.
Right. And that's specifically like committee hearings, committee hearings come up and, oh, meeting those. Did any board members have any comments that they wanted to make at this time? We'll take up state platform first, go through that, and then, and then we'll take up the federal platform after that. I don't know that we're necessarily going to walk through one by one.
If you want us to go through one by one, we can, it's at your preference, so however you would like us to proceed.
No, that wasn't the intent.
That's why we had it in advance to review.
So, I know, I know that mine might be as kind of a specific request, but I do not see anything with regards to juvenile justice. And I know that that's going to be something that is going to come in front of us soon. And so, I was just wondering if that could be included. But I do know that like item twenty-two, alcohol and drug, mental health treatment, but potentially including some form of juvenile justice in this state platform.
I guess, what would that look like? I guess that would, if there's more of a direction.
Yeah, making it more narrow and focused. I guess in terms of the services, the funding, what's out there in terms of programs that we could potentially utilize? Or in addition, we do have Ms. Bonwell here too, our probation chief, maybe she may know kind of what's on the horizon with regards to that area.
And we can, I guess, if it's, if, I mean, if the chief is interested in speaking on that, then that's fine.
And I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Or we can have staff reach out to the chief and work on something that covers that.
I agree to that.
Okay.
And so, I'll chime in there too. This draft will also be shared with our department heads. And again, for those of you listening, we do have some department heads in attendance. And so, this document really is a work of the board, staff and all our departments. So, with the juvenile justice, of course, we'll reach out to Chief Bonwell, to our other law enforcement partners too, if they see anything that needs to be added. We've already had a lot of support from department heads, so thank you very much to those who have already chimed in, but we will continue to work with our departments on any inquiry you have. But like the chairman did say, juvenile justice, we'll look into it. But if you have a specific ask, that's okay to share with us too, and then we'll go from there and see what's feasible and what can be put in here.
Thank you.
Did you have some?
Not on that one, on a different one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Have we ever had anything with the recent sanctuary state policies? And we've had the kind of an ask or an overview anyway from the sheriff that maybe he would like to see something worked out where we had a little bit better working arrangements that would technically would step outside of the state sanctuary policies? Have we ever had that conversation?
We had a resolution that this board did a couple months back in work with Sheriff Mike Boudreaux. It was at his request and the request of a previous supervisor, Michael Ennis, when we brought this presentation forward. It was a separate item in its own. It was not actually included in our platform at the time. It wasn't requested it be added to our advocacy. It can be something we can look at, but I'll also turn to Paul to see if there's been anything at the state level as far as movement in that area.
Nothing, it's, well, there are, go back to the, all the different listed bills that we have, there is an immigration-related list. And so, anything in this neighborhood would be on that list and staff has that. But it's, I don't want to say it's quieted down because I think we all know it hasn't. But I don't know of, I'll put it this way, I don't know of a follow-up bill right now to Senate Bill fifty-four. And so-
Has Mathis's got any traction? He was supposed to be putting one together in the assembly that had to do with putting the onus on the sheriff to make those arrangements between- the onus on the sheriff to make those arrangements between the sheriff and immigration, and trying to take it out of the state's purview. And he thought maybe it would, he thought maybe it would take some pressure off there if they, if the sheriffs would accept that, that it would be something that could move forward.
You know, there are a lot of bills by the Assemblymen that are on the Tulare County specific bill list that we've forwarded to staff already, and I'm doing a quick review. That's not ringing a bell, and I am not seeing it on the list.
And I'm sorry, I heard the number one time and I don't.
No, 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 but I will, I will just, when I get back to Sacramento, I'll, I'll double check.
Seems like it comes in a, it'll come in waves, like right now, like you said, it's kind of, kind of quiet, but just a few months ago with the, with the shooting spree that happened, it came to the forefront real quickly, and I just wonder if we should have something in there that gives us guidance as to how to, how to respond or where we're headed with that whole.
Yeah.
It's a big one, I mean, it could be a big one.
Yeah, I will, I will, I'll check his, every introduced bill by the Assemblymen, I will also go back and look at my own immigration list to see, you know, it may not be on the Tulare list yet, but it may be on the other subject list that we're maintaining.
I would ma, I would think maybe it's on the Sheriff's Association, maybe, I'm sure they're working with whoever they work with to push something through.
I, that's why I said through the chair, I, by no means has this died down. I think it's, we're in that, again, we're in that time period where bills are getting fleshed out, and so, there may be some spot bills. And sort of to your question Supervisor, that may be why it's not ringing a bell right now, because it's in spot bill form. But I think when we get to the deadline and a lot of these bills are fleshed out, then I think people will be talking about it again. There may be multiple bills on this subject in a month. Yep.
And just for reference, the bill list that Paul is referring to, you were all emailed, and we will get a copy out to the departments as well. And just to answer your question about maybe the Sheriff's Association may have some language similar to what Sheriff Boudreaux has been talking about, so we will reach out to his staff. And in the past, when there's items that maybe different organizations or associations are working on, our Board has not had an issue, depending on a Board decision, to support those type of roles. Just for example, we'll talk about it a little later, TCAG has their own legislative priorities, and we have supported some of those in our own platform, so we can take a look at other DA, sheriff, probation, other organizations, not just law enforcement. If there's anything they're pursuing that needs to be added on to ours as an extra need, we will do that as well.
In terms of specific language, on the Williamson Act item, it says, would keep and restore the Williamson Act subvention funding, I think we need to add in there to pre, I want to say 2009, or was it 2002? When, what year was the last year that we received the full 3.2 million, 3.4 that we?
Through the chair, we're over, going on over a decade.
Yeah.
And I do, another way to phrase it Supervisor, might be to at least its highest historical funding level, which was $39.2 million.
Yeah, yeah. Well, a fully funding of that, because even, you know, I mean, my, I would love to have, if there were new, you know, new entities, you know, new parcels to say, hey, I want to sign up for this, you know, come on Board, which would mean that it would be an additional cost. But, you know, so, you know, just fully funding. And, and fully funding, and then also, I think that we've often talked about verbiage that would redirect cancellation funds from leaving this county and going to the state, and actually going to the counties that are actually incurring the costs of canceling these contracts.
Okay. You have three people taking notes up here.
Before we move forward, give me just one second, I want to make a correction to an item on Pilt, yes?
Yeah, state Pilt, I think we had, we had federal Pilt numbers.
Yes, we had federal Pilt numbers, so know that that's going to change, but I also asked Paul to give you just a brief overview of what's happening at the state level with.
Yeah, so it, it gets confusing sometimes, but there are two different payment in lieu of taxes programs, federal and state.
State lands and federal lands.
And at the state level, I'm happy to say, one of the things we've actually accomplished over the last couple of years is we've got, we've gotten money in the budget for the budget year. And we're going on our third year of that. What we unfortunately have not yet been able to do is, well, we were unable to do this with Governor Brown, which was to get the state to finally own up to its arrearses for the state payment in lieu of taxes. It's about $10 million statewide, and I'm just hopeful this year, with a new administration, an administration that seems even just as much, if not more, committed to wiping debts off the state's books, it's a $10 million debt, it's not just owed to counties, it's owed to cities and some special districts, that we can get those arrearses paid once and for all. So, that, that would be part of the proposal too, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent.
You know what the state numbers were? Julieta, you were?
Quite a bit less, I think it's a few hundred thousand dollars or so.
We don't have the exact number, I think it's under 600,000, but we'll double check that number for you, at the state, not the county.
Because we're basically looking at Mountain Home, and I don't know what, Allen'sworth, yeah, those are probably about the only state lands in the county. I had a few items, if the other Board members didn't have anything else to add, or, or members of the public, and I have another bite at the apple. On the surface water storage, I think we need to change that. Prop 1's essentially spent out their dollars. But I, but I think what we need to support is supporting a new water bond with, that has money for temperance, subsidence issue, water quality, and Sigma implementation. I mean, might as well throw the whole, there's, there's talks right now of having another legislative water bond. And so, you know, it's, we're still supporting Temperance Flat, but, you know, that, that ship has sailed unfortunately. And so, as far as with Prop 1, so if there's a new water bond that came through, you know, still advocating for dollars for that, advocating for dollars for the issues on the Frye and Kern Canal, you know, with water quality, Sigma, you know, all the things that we liked from Prop 3 that wasn't able to pass in November, you know, I, I think including those elements, you know, realizing that they're not all going to be funded to whatever level we have, but, you know, having some piece of that helps us with, with our water challenges.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Can we maybe be less specific than a water bond, and just say, we want money for storage?
We, we can, I, I think that because there's talks about a water bond, then that, that may help, I would defer to staff and.
Do a both end, either or.
Or both end.
Yeah, I would, given the state surplus, I would, I would, I'd make it a, if you give, if you're, if there's five votes, to make it more open-ended, I think that would be fine.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is you keep saying there's all this extra money, then why pass another tax on? Just say, hey.
Bonds aren't taxes.
Kind of.
Yeah. Also, I know on the, on the forest management and the fire issues.
Chairman, if you could please just state the number of the item, if anybody's listening at home and following along with the platform? So, is that number three?
I don't know that there is any, so you're going to have to figure that out.
Number three, forest management, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't write that down, so I'll defer to you guys to figure that out. And people online, they're going to have to figure that out as well. Local control of land use, I know that's kind of been a big discussion after Paradise, and I think that that needs to be, you know, it's broad as far as we need to have local control over land use, but specifically, when it's talking about whether communities are in fire hazard areas, I mean, that's something that's very concerning. I know there's a lot of talk about having, you know, some type of workaround around that, but that, you know, we've got communities that are in, in SRA areas, that are in the high-risk areas that, that could potentially be impacted as far as limiting growth or doing any type of other things. So, including an element for that. I know you also represent the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. As Julieta mentioned before, we've partnered on other things. I think that, including dollars, additional advocacy for dollars for the air board. And this, for everyone that's listening, we just authorized an additional $4 million for utility, UTVs, if you got an old UTV, you better, you know, first come, first served. It's pretty good, 75%, a cover of 75% of the cost of all-electric. This little plug there. So, I mean, there's, good programs are happening like that. I already mentioned the program as far as that we created for emergency vehicles to go either hybrid or all-electric. And so, these are dollars that can benefit our county and our communities also. I would ask that we include that.
Appreciate that.
The other two things, I know Supervisor Shuckley and I in the past have, have had some discussions regarding, you know, and I, they'll probably not appreciate this that much, but, you know, Fresno State has a satellite campus here, you know, encouraging funding for the CSU campuses, for Fresno State specifically for that campus, I think that helps us. We know we've got a brain drain, we know that we need additional, you know, it's easier for access of higher ed, so supporting that, the efforts that are happening, you know, across the highway from us, I think is important for our communities. Obviously, we'd need to partner and figure out what that looks like, and take direction from Fresno State and their Government Affairs Director. But that, but I, I think that's something that's very important for Tulare County, not having a, a four-year degree program. And I, I'm, I think realistically, we can't, we can't expect to have our own standalone campus at this point in time. But, you know, supporting efforts that are ongoing right now and encouraging growth in that area, I think helps to provide some of that need, and I think it's more realistic to get something like that happen.
And we should just clarify also, being a public four-year, because we do have, people say we have four-year universities, but they're not public.
Right, no, that's a good point.
I wrote down UC Visalia. Is that okay?
That ship has sailed a long time ago.
Well, Frazier Valley, come on, Strathmore.
But, but understood.
And in doing so, it also creates a boost to our local economy, so encouraging something of that sort would actually be a tremendous asset for our county.
Absolutely, and may I, Mr. Chair, I, I think, I can't tell you about the viability, but I think you're going to see a proposed higher ed bond moving to the Legislature this year, so that's good timing.
Very good. And then the last, and I know Luke's way in the back, and he's, you know, he's, he's looking, but there's a lot of discussion around solid waste and the challenges that we're having from a recycling standpoint, and from a food waste standpoint. And I don't, I don't have any real direction today, so I guess this is similar to Supervisor Valero's request regarding juvenile justice, but I would encourage staff to, I know there's a lot of challenges in, in the solid waste side, and so, I think it's important that I know we didn't have, that was missing in our platform. And so, working with staff to find out what is a good solution as far as how we, you know, deal with Cal Recycle and all their mandates, and, because it's, 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 we're going to have to deal with that sooner rather than later, and I think it's, we've kind of swept it under the rug for a while, but it's, it's coming upon us quickly. I'm sure some of your other clients probably have had those type of concerns, so it shouldn't be too hard to figure out what would be, make sense.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, CSAC's already weighed in this year on that, and so, that's pretty easy to, we've got a template there for, to put in the platform.
Very good. Anything else anyone would like to add? Members of the public? Anyone interested in roadkill being salvaged for human consumption? I thought that was an interesting bill, you know? That's improving life in California. Little Tabasco on it?
We might have a lot of roadkill.
A lot of roadkill. If you discover it within 24 hours of death, you can actually file for a permit and eat it yourself.
In our district, they thought that would be redundant.
They're already doing it, huh?
That is good to, yeah, that is good to know before I drive home, back to Sacramento.
Yeah, in case you're hungry. Very good. Thank you, Paul, appreciate you making the trip down here.
So, with that, we have one more platform to review, we're going to move on to our federal legislative platform. I'm going to ask Denise England to remain up here with me in case you have any questions. And just, our federal lobbyist is actually Mr. David Wetmore, who was unable to be here today, but was actually joining us last week. I know some of you were able to see him, some of you were not. And he met with some department heads just to go over some topics that may be happening at the federal level. He might be listening in right now, hi David, if you are. And he will be working with us on any changes made to this platform today. And again, this is just a working draft for you to look over, you received an updated copy yesterday, there are printed copies here for the audience. And again, we will be reaching out with department heads on any questions that may come up today. And so, one thing I do want to note that was added right at the beginning of the platform was discretionary funding. This emerged after a discussion with David, it's something new we've added. It's pretty self-explanatory, but basically.
Pork barrel.
Mm-hmm. Basically, this funding is set to expire in the fall, and so, a lot of our county, some of our county programs made good use of this, so we just want to make sure to add this in our platform when traveling back to meet with our delegation, to make sure that they know Tulare County, you know, is fond of, is happy to receive this funding and happy for it to continue. So, that is a brand-new item that we've added on there. So, that's why you see everything in red, if you have a colored copy, if it's black and white, well, then you'll just see additions to it. So, I'll turn back to the chairman to see if there's any questions.
Questions, comments from Board? I, I think this, this platform looks pretty good. I think that we talk about the success project, I think we have to make sure that, I, I think we're, we're in the position we're in because the squeaky wheel got the grease, and because of Leader McCarthy's efforts on behalf of the county back there. But just because the award's been made, I definitely want to make sure that we aren't going to sit back and just let Army Corps do what they do, because what they do is stall. And so, I want to make sure we keep that thing.
For success, Dan.
Yes, for success, keep it moving. And, yeah, that, in terms of the, the platform, I don't really have any other specific comments or suggested changes. I think the forest management, just making sure that we keep, I see that, the numbers have been updated after the flyover, but as our various advocacy efforts take place in the future, just making sure these numbers are updated to reflect the most current data.
Thank you. As far as success, Dan, we have been in communication with David, and I know Denise met with him last week, and he has been carefully tracking because there have been maybe mentions of possibly dipping into that type of funding for other purposes, as far as things like that. And as far as we know, at this point, we feel very secure that that's not any closer to happening. I don't think Congress is for that type of move right now, but we are monitoring and keeping a close watch. Should we see any type of that movement, we would speak up about it. Jason?
Chair, I just, I just wanted to add on to Julieta's comments about discretionary funding and talking with David Wetmore last week, the, the dollar amount of discretionary funding that's set to expire is $300 billion. And there is a lot of uncertainty right now as to whether or not Congress is in a position to actually come to an agreement on something. Surprise. But, so his, so his caution to us was putting this in the platform, and just to caution the Board that absent a new deal, the administration could easily zero out a lot of these programs that we are benefiting from today. And, and so, it's just a word of caution that there may be just some period of uncertainty where funding gets taken away, and maybe it comes back, maybe it comes away, depending on how Congress and the two chambers, along with the administration, sort of hash out spending going forward. So, just as a word of caution, it's not a small dollar, and that's why he encourages to put on the platform to say, essentially, reauthorize and get new funding levels, because absent that, we become subjected to the sequestration rates of those programs, which could cause some temporary funding decreases, as well as any administration proposal.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment just about general federal advocacy. I know that you're going to be going back for the NACO conference, that's next week, right?
Friday.
The Legislative Conference, and then TCAG will be going on a separate advocacy trip in June. I will probably be accompanying TCAG on that trip back there for transportation purposes, but in the effort to not confuse between TCAG and Tulare County, and then also to make sure that we're advocating in the most effective
um, and then also to make sure that we're advocating in the most effective way possible, um, I did speak with, uh, Dave Wetmore last week about what the best timing would be for a, uh, an advocacy trip. Um, and he suggested to me, uh, that the board consider possibly a May trip. Um, and he said, because right now it doesn't, he questions the likelihood of, uh, Congress getting anything done right now. Uh, but, um, because they're still kinda discovering who they are, et cetera. Uh, but I think that, uh, we should look at that, uh, do, setting a trip, uh, as a board for, um, either May or, uh, in the fall, uh, because he also felt that, uh, giving Congress some time to get settled, uh, there may be some important bills that are being considered by, uh, Congress in the fall, uh, that we would have the opportunity to weigh in on. Uh, and I, I just think that, uh, uh, again, we've seen the benefits of, uh, being there in Congress as a, or in front of Congress as a board. Um, and we have brought those benefits back to the county in the past. So I think that's something we need to, uh, continue to do.
Appreciate that. I know for May, uh, for my personal calendar, I think it's, it's already getting booked with the, um, Western Interstate Regional Conference of NACO that, um, that week and some RCRC meetings. So, um, I think that's, that would be challenging for me. But if other board members wanted to do that, that's fine. I'm not opposed to a fall, um, trip. If we wanted to look at something in the fall and we can work with staff as far as schedules.
I think it's important. I remember, uh, there were times when UC Visalia would go back, uh, with the one voice trip and then try to go see others. And they would say, weren't you just here with another group? So I think it's important to differentiate and, and separate the board and the, the TCAG.
If the board wishes, um, I will go ahead and look at a couple of dates. I know that we've been trying to figure out when they're in session and what major events are happening here in Tulare County. And, um, I have looked at some May dates. I think there was maybe one week that may or may not work. Um, but we will definitely look into the fall. I know that we are being careful not to conflict with our own budget, um, which is happening the second week of September. So we will look at late September. And then we do have RCRC annuals, so there's a potential to push into October. So I will go ahead and have a conversation with David, um, just to see what are, solidify some dates that may work, bring those back to you, and then we can go from there.
I have, uh, a few, several. I know, shocker. Um, there's, and, and again, this, some of these aren't necessarily in any type of headings. Um, but, uh, from, from an agricultural standpoint, and this isn't something that we've necessarily dived into before, but thinking about what the administration's trying to do, I think supporting, uh, fair trade agreements is something that's important. And I don't know that it needs to be in the platform, but where I'm coming from is, is, um, there are certain markets that have, uh, reduced labor costs, and they have, uh, low-quality standards that are bringing, that are being imported into our country. Um, and some of those low-quality standards means that we get, um, bugs and hitchhikers, whether it's Asian citrus salad or some other things that aren't native to our, to our area that causes other problems. But also trade agreements that help us from an export standpoint. And we're the, we are the number-one export county in the country. And so we are very reliant upon exporting our, our, uh, produce. And so it's, so these trade agreements are really critical for our industries. Um, so I, you know, I don't really have specifics as far as what that looks like, but just from an overall, you know, making sure that we have good trade agreements in place as there's continuing discussion and dialogue, um, throughout with many of, many of the world's countries on those. I think it's important just to, just to say that we, we support fairness and equity, whether it's from a labor standpoint or from pesticide use and herbicide, you know, those type of things, so that it's an equal playing field for our farmers and for, um, the fruit that's, and the, and the other produce that's coming in from, from other markets. Um, if that, does, does that kinda make sense? I think we can discuss further. On the, um, on the forest management side, I have specifics, uh, as far as, and, and this is probably more from a regulatory side than from actual piece of, uh, of congressional acts, cause they, in the last year's omnibus bill, um, they did authorize it. But, um, supporting utilization of the full 20-year stewardship contracts and increasing the length. So the increasing the length would be a congressional act, um, but having Forest Service actually approve contracts. And what that means for everyone is that you can have a private company, they can designate a certain area in the forest to say that you're going to develop management plans. And for 20 years, you have a guaranteed contract to get X number of, uh, board feet out of that forest. You have to have a management plan. You have to make sure that it's, you know, you're not harming the environment, et cetera. There's a lot of restrictions, but it provides for jobs. It provides for surety for the industry. Um, and right now, um, that, I don't know that they're issuing any, I don't know that one 20-year stewardship contract has been issued since that began, since that was, uh, increased last year. So, um, doing that, and I'm sure Sierra Forest Products would be interested in getting some longer-term type of contract for that. And in that same vein, uh, in the omnibus bill, uh, there was also, uh, new NEPA exemptions that were instituted. And so just supporting maximum utilization of the new NEPA exemptions. I don't remember exactly how much. I think it was 3,000 or 6,000 acres that were exempt from NEPA. Um, that if you did something within that size, you didn't have to go through a full process of, these are relatively smaller projects. Um, and so just full utilization, because I think from, based on the information, when we went to Washington last year, and Supervisor Vanderbilt can correct me, um, if, if, if he saw it differently. But the top officials in the Forest Department are very interested in, in these new policies and implementing them. When Supervisor Worthley and I met with our local forester and our supervisor, she was very interested in doing that. But there's a, there, there still needs to be pressure applied, because there's a, there's a gap in between the top and the bottom. And the, and the folks in the middle are slowing things down. They, they don't wanna implement this. So I think that's why it's important to keep the, keep the pressure on, because there's bureaucrats being bureaucratic. Um, on the secure rural schools, uh, uh, point, there's specifically a piece of legislation that Senator Wyden and Crapo, uh, have authored to set up an endowment. And I don't know exactly what that number is, but it's, um, something that NACO, we've supported and are advocating for that would create a new fund, um, that would secure that. So having that specifically. And then the, on water, uh, yesterday, we had the benefit of, of hearing from, uh, Kendra Fowler from Congressman Nunes's, uh, staff at TCAG's board meeting. And one of the things she talked about was, um, the president had a, a declaration last year encouraging the Commerce Department, I believe it was NOAA, to complete new biological opinions on getting water out of the Delta. And so there's a period of time, uh, I believe about 150 days, that they have to complete those. And so they're asking for support to encourage that to move forward and to meet those deadlines and preferably even further. And for us, because his, Tulare County, most of its water is actually allocated out of Lake Shasta. So we are reliant upon water coming through the Delta in order for the exchange contractors to get their water and us to get the Friant water. So it's a, it's a little bit complicated, but it, it benefits us that, that the Delta is, is, um, continuing to flow with water. Also, from a, from temperance flat standpoint, we've, I, I think specifically having, requesting dollars for that, um, as well as the subs- I, I know we already have the subsidence on the canal, but temperance flat and, um, uh, reauthorization or extending the WIN Act, um, which isn't there. And I know Senator Feinstein has specifically said she no longer supports, so it's very concerning. And I think we need to make that known, that the WIN Act has been a vehicle Congressman Valdeo, uh, authored that and, uh, got that passed. President Obama signed it. Uh, and, and that has been a vehicle to get surface water projects funded. And so, uh, temperance flat was, the feasibility study was completed via that, uh, via that. Shasta's being looked at, being expanded through the WIN Act. There's other projects throughout the United States. So it's a great vehicle, um, that even if we don't have specifics, that if the WIN Act is extended, then we can continue to receive dollars for surface water projects. I think that's all. I have my notes, too. Don't get carpal tunnel.
So, um, thank you, Chairman. Does anybody else have any questions or comments or additions to the federal platform at this time? England, any comments from you?
Thank you. Appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Good.
We're good.
All right. Our last, uh, item for the day, discussed revising the county's financial policies to include a strategic reserve. Have our CAO and Ms.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is gonna be shared between Ms. Almonza and myself, and she's also battling the cold with, with everyone else. So I told her I'd try to help her out here a little bit. And we also wanna, uh, in advance, thank Cass Cook and his team for assisting us with this process as well. It took a lot of, uh, reading, rereading, and crunching numbers. So, much appreciated.
Okay. I am really under the weather, so I do apologize for the sound of my voice. And if it slowly dies, I'll try to rehydrate my throat. Good afternoon, Chairman, Board Members, CAO, Council, Sophia Almonza, Deputy CAO. Today, I'm here to present the fund balance and reserve policies. As the CAO has stated, this has been a collaboration effort with the Auditor's Office in regards to what we're going to propose and why we got to the numbers that we're gonna present right now. So the current financial policies that the county has are a bit vague and slightly out of date in terms of the current financial terminology. You know, in addition, it's silent on any funding reserve levels, and the fund balance process is not clearly defined. This is really the basis as to why we're looking at updating the county financial policies. So in, in this effort, our goal is to update the language, to add a fund balance and reserve section, cause we currently do not have one. Um, classify fund balance for reporting purposes to recommended levels. Um, have a board-approved methodology to fund these reserve levels and annually review the financial policies. The section that we're bringing for you today is the fund balance and reserve section. The next section we're proposing to bring would be the investment policy section. So first of all, let's define what fund balance is, cause I'm sure it's not something everybody knows exactly what it is. So we have GASB 54. So what is GASB 54? GASB 54 is a governmental accounting standards board, and in that board issues out statements. And the state, this statement 54 was issued out in February 2009. And it was issued out to provide a clearer fund balance classification for governmental fund types. It's a lot of accounting terminology, but essentially it grouped them into five classifications. And those five classifications are the following: non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. So each of our ending fund balance numbers have to go into one of those five groups. So an example of a non-spendable fund balance group would be a prepaid item, something that's contractedly legal or required to be maintained and intact. Another example of that would be the SJVIA loan. A restricted example would be any grant proceeds. It's not restricted. Anything that has a law or regulation that restricts its use of it, um, AB 109 funding would be an example of that. Committed, our committed amounts are actual dollars that the board has, um, set aside for a specific purpose. So any item that comes before the board that you approve will be grouped into that committed classification. And also, please know that the committed classification also includes our strategic reserve, which has also been referred to before as the general reserve. The assigned are a mark, are amounts earmarked by our CAO. It's usually done in a memo format. Um, we'll go over some of those. And the unassigned is anything that doesn't fall in those categories. So in order to, um, establish what unrestricted fund balance is, what we look at is look, take the committed, assigned, and the unassigned balances, cause we've already determined we cannot use non-spendable and restricted. So those are off the table. So that only leaves the remaining three. So, and this is how we get to our fund balance level for the general fund. So the Government Finance Officers Association, which we refer to as GFOWA, is an organization that assists professional management and governments in developing and identifying financial policies, best practices through education, training. Essentially, they're the guru for governmental finance. Any government accountant would knows what GFOWA is. We all refer to it. We all download its trainings. We update and purchase their books, cause they have set policies that are, are just wonderful to follow. So GFOWA, um, in this instance, for a fund balance level, GFOWA recommends maintaining an unrestricted fund balance of minimum of two months of your operating revenues or your expenditures. I'll get to how we calculate ours. So for our ending fiscal year 1718, the total unrestricted fund balance level, and remember, that's the grouping of those three, is at 18.73%. We ended up using the operating, um, revenues, because we prepared a analysis of the last 10 years of the operating revenues and our operating expenditures to determine our operating revenues were the less volatile. And as are the less volatile, that's the, that's the model we chose to use. So based on how we came up to here, our fund balance level is at the 18.73 ending fiscal year 18. So what we're proposing to do is to amend our financial policies to include language that the county will strive to meet the 16% total unrestricted fund balance level. Currently, we're exceeding that. So we're putting in soft language stating the county will strive to meet, in case there's a year where we might not be able to meet it. And then we'll come up with a replenishment policy that is actually written in the revised financials that were provided. So now we move on to the strategic reserve. As mentioned, our strategic reserve, also known as the general reserve, is in the committed classification. So when we take the, when we take our assigned and unassigned group and committed, it makes our unrestricted fund balance. So for our strategic reserve, for our ending fiscal year 1718 numbers, we're at $28 million, which is 4.8% level. So in fiscal year 1819, we added $2 million to, in our adopted budget, to our strategic reserve. So at the ending of fiscal year 19, which is June 30th, then we'll essentially have $30 million in our strategic reserve. So as our strategic reserve is in the committed classification, in order for the board to access funding to the reserve, all you have to do is bring an item to the board to approve your funding, the amount that you want, and its purpose to be recommitted. So for the strategic reserve, we're proposing the following. We're proposing to amend the financial policy language to include this county will strive to meet an 8% strategic reserve level. I, I wanna make sure that it's clear that even though the strategic reserve is in the committed classification, we're not asking to have an 8% committed level. We're asking the 8% strategic reserve be the funding level. So there's gonna be more in the committed group, more than the $30 million for the strategic reserve. In our review of county comparisons, we looked at, um, other counties' reserve and fund balance policies. We not only looked at neighboring counties, but we looked at what we call the best-in-class counties. So we'll start with the neighboring counties. So here we looked at Fresno, Kern, Madera, Kings, and Merced. Um, Kings County and Merced, we were not able to locate any policies that discussed anything in regards to reserve or fund balance levels. We looked in their budget books and the CAFR. It's all public record. Um, we weren't able to find any information from those counties. The other counties do have such policies. However, they did not actually put a mark. They didn't put a percentage or an actual specific level. And that's why there's a lot of the NAs. So, but when we go to the best-in-class, you can see I've highlighted Tulare here as a goal, cause our goal is to get to the 16%. goal, because our goal is to get to the 16% for the unrestricted fund balance level and the strategic reserve of 8%. We have Santa Barbara County at 15%, San Diego at 10%, Sonoma at 16, and Ventura at 15. So we're really striving to be the top of the class. So how did we get to all of these calculations? So I have a couple of slides that kind of explain how the methodology works on how we came up with these numbers. So this slide is showing fund balance summary of the general fund, and you can see it for the past four years. So this is, this is expressed in thousands, so even though non-spendable for 2018 says 8,007, it's really 8 million. So for the non-spendable, there's 8.7 million. For the restricted, there's 74.6 million. For committed, we have a 44 million. Assigned, 13.4. Unassigned, a 50 million. And a total fund balance amount of 191 million point four. And that was our ending 2018 numbers. So by this chart, you can also see, and that was partly why I included it, you can see the growth of our total fund balance year after year. This is just the last four years, but even the two years prior that we pulled, there's been growth each year.
Sophia, would you consider the unrestricted fund balance, like I know many cities would call it a general fund, is that what we would consider a general fund, our unrestricted fund balance?
All of these are in the general fund.
Are they all general funds, so including the non-spendable and restricted as well?
Yes, that is absolutely correct. So going back to like the restricted, AB 109, so that that funding comes through primarily like our law enforcement partners, sheriff probation, and they're actually in the general fund. So then those funds would be restricted, but still part of the general fund. So now that we have determined the total fund balance amounts, I just have here for 2018, we pulled our total operating revenues, which was 576 million, and then again, that total, excuse me, that total unrestricted fund balance, which is the committed, assigned, and unassigned, to make that 108 million. So the percentage of our operating revenues, based on the formula that GFOWA asked us to use and suggested that counties use, we come up to the 18.73%. So that's how we actually got to that number. So again, we're over where we want to be, because we're only asking to write in the financial policies to be at the 16, to strive to be at the 16%. So in closing, we propose the following. We propose that we annually review the financial policies. So we bring forward to future workshops each sections that need to be updated. Just as I proposed earlier, the next section we're looking at is bringing forward is the investment policies, amending the financial languages to add fund balance and reserve sections. We would like to add to classify fund balance levels to the 16% of total unrestricted fund balance level, and then the 8% for the strategic reserve funding level. So the 16% for the total restricted, unrestricted fund balance level, we're slightly over at 18% right now. The 8% strategic reserve funding level, we're right under 5%. So the goal is to bring up that strategic reserve level to that 8% mark. So this slide does say, any questions or comments? Thank you, and I do apologize for my voice, but I do believe Cass Cook, our auditor controller, wanted to say a few words before I closed, so I want to give him the opportunity to speak before you ask questions.
Hi. It's a pleasure to be here. It's an important topic for our office, it's been a top priority for me, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with the CAO's office and the great things we've been able to accomplish this year. I do just want to point out a couple of things. There's the CAO's office, and they have jurisdiction or authority over the budget, and the Auditor's Office really has more focus on the financial statements and the accounting that occurs. And this is kind of a situation where the two, there's a little bit of overlap and where the two meet together, so it's good that we can work together on this. And just to add a little more meat to that, so the budget really is, you know, your spending plan. This is how you're going to spend your money for the year. You look at where you think your revenues are going to be and where your expenses are going to be, and you plan for what you want to accomplish. This is part of the financial statement, financial statements. It's really about accounting for the activities that occur. So what actually happened during the year? And we, as the Auditor's Office, we produce the financial statements, and we take a snapshot at the end of the year. So June 30th, we're going to take a picture and say, this is the health, the fiscal health of the county. And we create a balance sheet. We have our assets and our liabilities, and we have our fund balance. How much money, we look at, you have this money, much money at the end of last year, money came in, money went out. Simple as that. This is what we have today. This is what we can spend on projects and staffing. So I guess what I want to make clear is that this is not a spending plan. It's just, and we may be able to think of it as more of a savings, a savings plan. It tells us where we are and kind of gives us purpose to the savings that we have. Now, having said that, action can be taken by the board during your budget to take that savings plan and convert it into a spending plan. So even though you set aside funds in the savings plan for certain things, during the budget season, you can take it out of whatever's there and create your own budget and deal with it as you will. There's flexibility there, and we can talk about that more. But I do just want to say that during, I'm glad that we're going through this process. My hope is that you're more informed about the fiscal health of Tulare County, and then that our budget processes can be enhanced, and that we can really deal with the unrestricted fund balance and put some purpose and some classifications there. We're not, it's all in the general fund. We're not moving money, we're classifying it, we're giving it purpose. It's our savings plan, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Cass.
Cass?
Jason, did you want to say?
I just want to, so for just point of reference, you mentioned our strategic reserve right now is at, well, will be 30 million the end of this year. What, proposing an 8% strategic reserve, what would that minimum, one, we're proposing as a minimum, two, is what would that look like in dollars?
Roughly 45 million.
How much?
45 million.
15 million more than we have now.
That is correct. That is the goal.
And I, could I also clarify that?
Yeah, and then if we go back to, let me go back to the other slide. So if we go back over here, what Cass was referring to is that strategic reserve is here, but see, we have an unassigned balance, so what we're proposing is moving it from unassigned and classifying it to committed, and again, giving it that purpose. So we're not adding, bringing in new money or anything, it's money that's already there. We're just repurposing those dollars into the strategic reserve.
And that?
And then he, as he mentioned, it was just an accounting shift.
And it's the unrestricted, so those three categories, committed, assigned, and unassigned, that two-month operating reserve, that 16%, so that, that's your 16%. Within that committed, as Sophia just said, is that 28 million of the strategic reserve. So the point is, your strategic reserve is not separate and aside, this is not 45 million aside from that 16%, it's a portion of the 16%.
Yeah, so at some point, whenever we reach the goal that we're proposing, what's committed in our committed right now is the reserve.
That's the reserve?
That's where we're headed.
Yes.
And so our committed would be, would be 45 plus in the future.
45 plus, based on where your revenues are, because we're going to go two months operating revenues.
If the revenues were like, like, so right now, they're roughly 24, no, 16, and then our 30, yeah, whatever that math is in there. Yeah, so whatever above and beyond it. So at some point, there'll be, there'll be 45 plus, another 20 or so there down the road.
Yeah, and it just depends on what's committed and where, as you said, because of how we do the methodology, the calculation will be depending on our operating revenue, which is, ended on 2018, was 576 million.
Yeah, because in the committed, we've got other things that the board has taken.
Exactly, has taken action on.
Has taken action on, that we've said, this is, we're willing to fund this program, and so in addition, so that, you subtract the 28 million that's already there for the general reserve, and the board has already taken action on those 16 and a half million dollars, roughly.
That is exactly right.
To say that, you know, those things, so the add of 15 more million, and that's what it would, and then, you know, assuming we don't commit to some other program, and I'm sure the CAO would appreciate it. Program or something.
That's what I'm saying, so a couple of years from now, we look at this, and it's going to have, at the committed, it'll have 60.
Right.
Yes.
About 45.
Sure.
It's going to have your strategic reserve dollar plus whatever else has been committed.
And I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, part of the reason why we're bringing this here is because, as Sophia's presentation mentioned, is we've always had some level of reserve as a county for the last number of years, but there really hasn't been a goal or any kind of policy to give direction to the CAO to sort of say, hey, based on the board's direction or their adopted policies, they're expecting me to fund this at such a such level. And so this kind of solidifies that, again, we've used some soft language, because we recognize that in some years, we may be able to put more in than other years, depending on the revenues and the economy. But I think what this does for us is it gives us, one, clarity on what the board's policy is, and, two, the expectation that we're to commit to this strategic reserve and continue funding it.
Can you comment on, anyone about, I know I asked about Stanislaus and San Joaquin counties?
Yes.
I know that they weren't on the chart, but I think they have some interesting things as well.
Okay. Save Sophia's voice. Yeah, they're really two completely different policies, and they're almost at the opposite ends of the spectrum. Stanislaus, they do a, they're solely, well, they're looking at the general fund discretionary revenues for three preceding years. So what does that mean for us? I'm sorry, hold on. Yeah, maybe I do need Sophia.
Abacus.
Okay, so essentially, what's happening here is if we took our three years of general revenues, which are what we call our discretionary revenues in Department 031, if we use that 8% of that, then it would only bring us that 14.2 million dollars for a strategic reserve. We're striving to get to that 45 million dollar mark, so we're 31 million dollars under. So that's not a recommendation we would recommend.
Okay, good.
For San Joaquin, you want to do that one?
Yeah, let me think. This one is, hold on a sec. Okay, so in this, San Joaquin is unique, too, because they're not looking just at the general fund, they're taking in special revenue funds, capital project funds, debt service funds, and enterprise funds, right?
That is correct.
So it's blowing up the reserve, and it's including numbers that really shouldn't be there, a part of, part of that calculation.
Well, according to financial policies and government financial guidelines, they're using groupings that aren't normally used.
Yes, so what happens is, the one policy, I think, is, is low, it's setting the reserve too low, and the other one's setting it too high, and we want to be Goldilocks, the just, the just right.
If, but theoretically, if we had something similar to San Joaquin, 5% of all revenue, or all funds, what's, if, that's 5%.
58.2 million.
But that's not really that much higher.
So it would be 12 million, we would be needing 12 million more, roughly.
Okay.
The amount, I don't think is that, it's not that much more higher, but I think the methodology is odd.
Odd, sure, okay. Well, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to make a comment. First of all, just a general kind of step back away from even just this reserve conversation right now, but really want to compliment the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, all four of you in one. I appreciate you being here and interacting with the CAO's office the way that you have. We've had prior administrations, I should say, prior elected officials, that were much more focused on exterior customer service. I consider this relationship, internal customer service, and really looking to you as a financial analysis strength within the county, and you're really doing this by collaborating with the CAO, as you're doing in this case, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
As to Tulare County, on Slide 6, I really do like seeing our county's numbers align us with what we would consider the best-in-class counties. I, you know, we are a fiscally responsible board, and ultimately, it's our reserve policies, our unrestricted fund balances, that are going to help us to weather financial storms and ultimately provide a relatively consistent level of service to our constituents. So if we were to use these monies for one-time purposes or for other aspects of our business, when those tough times do come, we aren't able to provide the basic level of services that we are used to and accustomed to providing. So I'm supportive of this, this policy. I think it's, it's a good news story to be able to align ourselves with these best-in-class counties, and I look forward to continually visiting this as we go forward.
Comments from the board, members of the public, department heads that are squirming?
Mr. Chair, we'll bring this back for a final consideration and discussion at a regularly agendized board meeting.
Very good. I just want to echo the comments of the vice chair, that I appreciate the efforts. This is something that's very good, very positive for us. I think it, from a, it helps, not only from all the things stated, but transparency, I think as well, it helps, and I think it's, it's pretty doable, too. It's not out of the realm of possibility, so thank you. With that, if there's no further comments, that concludes today's board meeting.
I'd like to thank the board for their time on the study session, and hope you've learned a lot today.
Thank you. And adjourned.